Para accesar la traducción en inglés, por favor vayan a la página del distrito escolar y seleccionen la palabra inglés para poder accesar y cambiarlo al español para los documentos.
Meeting Interpretation Services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen.
Para accesar la traducción en español pueden poner el icono que tiene el globito abajo de la página para poder accesar el español.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chocinio, Mowakma, Karkin, Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. I would like to welcome everyone to this special meeting of the Board of Education, which is focused on facilities. The mission of the West Country Coastal Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible, thinking, contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must: 1. Treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect; 2. Provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate; 3. Serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded, lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society; 4. Take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community; 5. Provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating; 6. Respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. The board members should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the members' own personal interests. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on discussion items through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, your hand must be raised before public comment begins for the item. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Dr. Hurst, can we please have the roll call?
Absolutely. President Phillips?
Here.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds?
Good evening, everyone present.
Trustee Reckler?
Good evening, present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Good evening, present.
Trustee Christian?
Good evening, present.
So all are present and accounted for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we are going to go to Agenda Review and Adoption. I need to take off item D1, which is the first reading of a draft board policy for the CBOC. Board members, we only have three consent items, but do you have any items you want to take off consent? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I do want to take off B as a Boy One.
B One?
It's the seventy-five million dollar bond. I also want to take off B as a Boy Two, tax rates. And I also want to take off B as a Boy Three, appointment CBOC.
Okay.
I would also like to, if possible, I would like to hear C two approve the bond management program before C one, because I believe it sets the table, but this isn't necessary.
So, all of the consent items are off. I had a conversation with staff on, I don't remember which day we were in there talking, but the items and moving them around, but the items that are presented in there, they actually put those items in there in a specific order, so they had a reason for doing that. So if we can stay with that, because we actually had that discussion, that will be great. Okay. Okay. But they did combine your item from last time where it was the master plan review and then the update. So they did put that into one item based on the comments that you made last time. On board, we need to do public comment on this item, because we have, well, everything's off of consent already. So there's nothing left on consent for people to comment on. Okay, so that said, can I have a motion to adopt this agenda?
I'll move as a presenter.
Okay, number second, please.
Number second.
Okay, so trustee Smith Folds, who's first this evening?
So trustee Gonzalez Hoi went yesterday, so we are on trustee Reckler.
Okay, thank you very much. So it's been moved and seconded, moved by Reckler, seconded by Gonzalez Hoi. Mrs. Reckler, can you begin the vote?
Sure, Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Oh, Christian, yes.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you very much, everyone. So our agenda is adopted for the evening. And we are now going to go to public comment. This is a general public comment for any item that's not on the agenda. If you have a comment on an item that's on the agenda, please wait for that item. Mr. Aurelio, I think you're doing it this evening. Do we have any public comment?
There are currently two hands raised.
Okay, please raise your hand before the item starts. Going once, going twice, and it is gone.
All right, our first speaker, Don Guzni, you may unmute and begin your comment.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm pleased that item D1 has been, I'm sorry, hang on, you just changed my screen. I'm pleased that item D1 has been pulled from the agenda tonight. Most of us were caught off guard and did not learn that this was even being considered until late Friday afternoon, right before a three-day holiday weekend when it would be very difficult to lobby the board members and get the word out to the public, right before another special call board meeting last night. Bad timing. As the former chair of the CBOC, I had a lot of serious problems with what was proposed. This wasn't a matter of wordsmithing a line or two or maybe looking to tweak a section. Out of the fifteen pages, I would have suggested shredding maybe twelve to thirteen of those pages. I worry, though, about sending this back to the Facilities Committee for retooling. We need people that actually support community oversight of the nearly three-quarters of a billion dollars of taxpayer bond funds. We don't need people who want to shut the community out of the oversight of their money. We don't need a private conversation between staff and the Facilities Committee. We need an open dialogue where all of the stakeholders are invited to sit at the table for a real discussion. For two and a half years, the CBOC worked closely with senior staff, including the superintendent and the Governance Committee, and came up with a proposed board policy that all the stakeholders could live with. I would suggest using that as a starting point and then making the minor tweaks where appropriate to meet today's needs. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jose De Leon. Mr. De Leon, you may unmute.
Good afternoon, board. Superintendent Hirsch, more than anything else, I'd like to thank all the work that has done for putting together the graduations at the different high schools. Had some really good feedback on the Hercules graduation and the way it was casted to the whole community. So thank you again for doing that work and respecting our graduating seniors and our parents. Additionally, WCCA would like to continue working in collaboration with Dr. Hirsch, the school board, in planning towards the fall opening and making sure that we have all our ducks in a row to make sure we do the best for our community. Thank you very much.
That concludes general public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Aurelio. We are now going to move on to item C1, which is Annual Update of the 2016 Facilities Master Plan Implementation of Measure D 2010 and Measure E 2012 and Approval of the Prioritization Criteria for Project Sequencing of Measure R 2020.
Hi, we have Mrs. Mahia Hooper with us from our Facilities Department due to the presentation on the annual update and the prioritization sequencing.
Hello, good evening, board. Thank you for having us tonight. We have two important topics to review about the Facilities Master Plan, the first being the annual update of the implementation as well as the prioritization criteria for sequencing of measure R. So starting with the implementation update of Measure D and Measure E, we wanted to step back a moment and start at the beginning of what the master plan process looked like. The master plan was originally implemented to define the use of the remaining Measure E and D funds and create a long-term plan and priorities with the priority school sites. The priority school sites were identified, twenty-one of the schools within the district were identified as schools that did not have major remodels, a major work done, or had facility projects that were placed on hold until the completion of the master plan. So you can see the list of what those twenty-one school sites are on the right. As part of the process to be able to determine how best to spend the remaining bond funds, a majority of the funding went to rebuild of Michelle Obama, formerly Wilson, and Lake. However, there were a full set of critical needs projects that were smaller scale that addressed things like seismic safety and other major programmatic misses that we had at some of these school sites to be able to help them along until they were able to get to the rebuild process. So looking at the chart on the left, you'll see all of the schools that are in that priority site along with Harmon Knolls, which was identified as a potential secondary location for the Hilltop Campus, and whether they were critical needs or the replacement projects. And we also have the list of the cost, any adjustments made by the board later, and the approval and the revised number that the budget is for, as well as what status each of the projects are. You can see that we have a number of them that are complete, as well as three of them closing out of Michelle Obama, Richmond High, and Fairmont, and quite a few also in the green design and planning. So those projects are moving forward. Most of them have architects assigned, all of them have approved budgets by the board. Reviewing the financial side of things, there is a projected available funds of approximately one hundred and sixty-five million dollars. As far as our current budget balance, we have just over a hundred and fifty million, and there's fourteen million that has not been identified for a particular project that is beyond the current project budgets. This does not include a future issuance of Measure R, but it does, and it also does not include pending state approvals for our CTE programs that we have not received yet. However, it does include state reimbursements that we have gotten throughout the years that have not been spent. As you can see on the bottom, there's links to additional financial information. If you would like to know the current standing of our budgets and how it's been spent on various projects, those are given updated, those are updated monthly at the Facilities Committee, so we keep those up to date in case you're curious throughout the year and not wanting to wait for annual update. Moving on, one of the big completions of this year was the Michelle Obama rebuild. The project page of completed construction that includes all of the construction newsletter, as well as the ribbon cutting, can be found on our website. Here's just a few recap pictures of what it turned out as, and I hope you're enjoying your host there as I see the pink color behind you. That blue is ingrained in my mind. Richmond High Critical Needs Project, this was another big project that was completed this year. It was a new gym facility. Beyond that, we also did seismic upgrades to the science building and added an elevator for ADA access to the second floor. In addition to that, a small shop building, which was one of the original on the campus, was torn down at the front of the campus, and the health center was added to this project because of DSA requirements. That page is also on our website, so if you want to see the construction newsletters and additional information, you can find it there. As for our projects that are still in progress, we have Lake Elementary School. We are currently in the process of hiring our design-build entity. The bridging documents were complete some time ago, and we are at the bitter end of the design-build entity hiring process, so we're hoping to bring that forward to you very shortly. Riverside Elementary, we're pleased to report that DSA gave us approval within last week. So we are all clear to move forward with construction this summer. This is a soil stabilization project. So these little blue circles you see on the map that are in the parking lot and surrounding the edge of the creek will help create soil stabilization panels that will keep the soil in place in case of an earthquake. And so there will be an additional playground realignment project that will be coming forward, because part of what this will do is disrupt the existing kindergarten playground. So we're going to reestablish that actually on the other side of the building. So more to come there, but we're excited to have the construction start within the next couple of weeks for this one. Pinole High School, we have the final phase of construction. This is a legacy project that was outside of the Facility Master Plan, but it is moving forward and one of the major projects the Facility Department is working on. The Phase Five takes the original temporary campus and turns it into the softball accommodation, softball, baseball field, as well as resurfaces the track, puts new carpet on the artificial turf for the main stadium, new home bleachers and press box, new field house, reworks some of the fencing, and really finishes off this campus. This is currently out to bid. Bids are due in June, or in next week, next week. Beyond that, we have a few projects that are really waiting the outcomes of tonight. So Kennedy High School Critical Needs Project and Stige Elementary Critical Needs Projects were really defined to help those campuses become prepared for a rebuild project, knowing that that is an important component and knowing that this is a mainly demolition project for these campuses. We want to have a firm grasp of where they land in the prioritization process so that we can make sure that we address the needs appropriately as we move forward with these projects. These have their budgets and they are already passed by the board and earmarked for the projects, but they are not moving forward at the moment. Hercules Middle and High School and Shannon Elementary School are two projects that are currently in schematic design. Hercules is a science project. You'll hear a little bit more about that later as we bring forward the educational specification later this evening. Shannon Elementary is a new multipurpose room. Their current multipurpose room is actually a portable that does not have an actual kitchen to it and is extremely undersized and disproportionate to the rest of the district. So we are currently working and moving forward on both those projects, as well as Collins and Cameron, which are also in schematic design. These projects have similar scope of redoing the current heating system to bring in a full heating ventilation and air conditioning system. The change to add air conditioning also puts an additional load on our electrical, so we will be bringing in new electrical service to support that change over to a fully air-conditioned campus, as well as mechanical ventilation, which these campuses are currently lacking. So that is the completion of where we are with the current implementation of the defined projects that were in the 2016 Master Plan on the funded list. In addition to that, obviously, we have not built all twenty-one schools. We have gotten through two, so now we're down to nineteen, nineteen that still have major projects identified. And so moving forward from here, we have to somehow decide how Measure R prioritization should occur. And we are looking back at what we did in 2016 with our very public process of creating an overall needs list, master plan options that led to the final implementation plan. And you can see that we did have a prioritization committee within this diagram that really helped create those criteria that created the last list of prioritization. And so we are looking at updating that. The original master plan criteria is listed here. We went to the prioritization committee, which sent it to the Facilities Committee, which sent it to the board, and the board was the one that finally approved these. It all started, though, with a community survey that came with twenty-five criteria that was generated out of those surveys and community meetings. And in the committee, they added, split, and combined and narrowed the final criteria to the ones you see here. The question was, when we started this, though, that was in 2016 before a lot of things happened, and was it really applicable to 2020? So what we did is we started with the community survey again. We had over two thousand responses, and the survey, we asked the level of importance each one of the 2016 criteria had on today and if they were still applicable. In addition to that, we asked, was there any new criteria that should be considered? And whether or not there was a desire for full rebuild or modernization projects. The results out of this included thirty new criteria that were considered by the prioritization committee. Our new prioritization committee in 2020 had representation from a lot of various groups throughout the district, including one parent and two students from each feeder pattern, as well as representatives from many of our committees that we have within the district, as well as our labor partners and our our district's operational groups. The committee met five different times, and on the fifth committee meeting on February 2nd, the following criteria and metrics were recommended to go forward to the Facilities Committee. This did include a hand, more than half were from the original criteria, but we also added additional ones and adjusted the metrics. So after this came forward from the prioritization committee, the Facilities Committee reviewed it, and with conversation with staff, the Facilities Committee has moved forward this set of criteria of where most of the criteria is still here. However, we have a chunk of them, these four on the bottom that are shown in yellow, were determined to be applicable to all district sites and shouldn't be restricted to the nineteen priority sites. So the ones left in white are the priority sites, and staff was directed to create a weighting for these criterion metric. So looking back and reflecting upon the intent of the 2016 Master Plan, what was listed in the Measure R bond language, discussions during the prioritization committee meetings, and also the community survey, the following structure was created or recommended for the weighting of these different criteria. And so the lowest level of weight went to just basic criteria. The second level of weight went to needs that would require larger amounts of change to fix or provided equity, and the highest amount of weighting went to health and safety requirements. So that was the framework that was used to be able to determine the weighting scale that you see on the right. So these are the criteria that were listed in white on the previous slides, and it is showing that we have a functionality score, which was the original assessment score performed back in 2016 on how well our school sites functioned. What was the educational suitability of the buildings? And that got a weight of two. Seismic needs was from a seismic report that was done in 2005, but we are able to update the scoring based on which critical needs projects had been completed, and that got a weight of three, knowing that seismic concerns are always high on the health and safety. Age of school, the age of the main permanent building on the school was given a weight of one, considering there's a lot of different factors that come with the age of school and whether or not that really causes it to be the worst off school or not. That's why it has the lowest rating. Physical condition was again an assessment score done back in 2015 or sixteen by the original Facilities Master Planners, and we gave that an assessment score of three, because many of the physical conditions had to do with ADA compliance and other components that can be led towards, and structural safety and those kind of things. So they lead towards this health and safety front. The next criterion was percent of black and brown youth and percent of students with low income and foster youth. That was determined by the 2019-2020 LCAP and duplicated count, and because this was towards equity, it was given a weight of two. Number of restrooms and sinks per student, which would be judged by the percent under the state code requirement, was given a one, considering that restrooms can be added without doing a full rebuild, so it was considered a smaller project and therefore would meet the criteria of the smallest weight. Lack of view windows and access to green space on campus is the percent of classrooms without view height windows, plus the percent of exterior campus that is not green space. That was given a rating of two, because it was based in equity, as well as that it has a, it takes a considerable amount to add windows to a building that currently does not have them. Finally, the level of ventilation, which was really a discussion coming out of not only COVID, but also the recent fires, that adds different dynamics to our operational HVAC systems, is judged by an MNO assessment score and given a weight of three, considering the health and safety concerns that come with proper ventilation. So this is the criteria metrics and weighting that we are recommending to move forward tonight and hoping for adoption. This is what we're looking for direction on. As far as next steps go, if this adoption occurs this evening, the data from each individual nineteen sites will be applied to create a sequencing list. In addition to our priority school site projects, though, there are other factors and needs that need to be added to the Facility Master Plan, which includes which includes initiatives that were included in the measure R language, which were air quality and thermal comfort, as well as technology. And as always, student housing needs are in considerations of accommodations for new programs and addressing areas over capacity are all needs that should be considered in developing the options. And then finally to an implementation plan. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Board. We are now going to go into clarifying questions. Trusty Reckler.
I feel like I never started off, so I'm confused tonight. So first, thank you to, thank you to everyone. Nice to see everyone. I have a couple of clarifying questions. The first one is Harmon Knolls. I think you said Hilltop School, but I think you meant Highland.
I did, I'm sorry.
Okay. And is, is Harmon Knolls going to be needed for any kind of Highland relocation? As if they go forward with work?
So the answer to that question is that the Highland property, as it sits, is not, are not financially usable as far as a new site. That site is a fill site when the housing development was developed. And what we found is we have over 20 foot of fill that created the property that Highland currently sits on. So during the master planning phase, in ways speak about master planning. So prior to the 2016 master plan, there was a master plan for the particular site for Highland was done and proposing new construction of a new school on the site. When we discovered the problems with the seismic stability of the hillside with the fill, the better option was looking at properties that were, were associated with the community. The Harmon Knoll site was a site that had been closed by the district many years ago. We did some assessment on that particular site. Further assessments within the 2016 master plan, you term that would be a logical site for the replacement campus, the Highland, if Highland were to erase, at which time Highland comes as a rebuild project.
So when it's rebuilt, do they need, do they need a temporary campus like, you know?
Well, they would actually stay on the, if, if Highland was rebuilt, Highland would stay on the Highland campus. We would build a new school on the Harmon Knolls property and then relocate Highland to the Harmon Knolls property.
Okay. So it wouldn't be used in any way temporarily, you know, like, you know, Wilson moved to Portlaw.
Its location associated with other school sites is dependent on what it was, but it's too far for Stige. And if Stige were an example of a project that would come.
Oh, it's way too far for Stige. Yeah, for sure.
So it would have to be a, a school that was in, in the vicinity.
Okay. Okay. That's the first question. The first one is the budget for Lake at 65.6 million. Is that, was that board approved or is that just?
Yes, the, the budget is.
Okay. Would you be able to explain the legacy project, which is the softball and baseball field at Upper Penole? Why is that outside the facilities master plan?
Because Penole was actually, the master plan, Penole was done actually in, in the early 2000s, mid 2000s. And so that project was actually already in design and out to bid in the design phase. And well on its way when the 2016 master plan was envisioned. And that's why we call those the legacy projects. There were several projects that were outside of the master plan.
Okay. And when you say functionality score, you mean like literally how well the campus works? Like, do the doorknobs work and does the windows open? Is that what that means or?
No. So that's more the condition score. So the condition score is, is the building a good building? The facility, the functionality score really has to do with whether it's a good building for education. So for example, if you have a science program, does the room that the science program is being offered and have, have sinks? Does it have access to additional ventilation? Does it have chemical resistant countertops and storage? So that's what a functionality score is. And it goes for both building and site. So when you look at the site, are there proper playgrounds? Is there, how's the drop off? How's the parking? So we're looking at quantities and functionality.
Okay, that was helpful. And then would you be able to clarify that against what student, student housing needs are?
Yeah. So student housing is really looking at the capacity and utilization of the sites. So when you're, when we're looking across the district, do we have enough seats for the students that live in the area?
Okay. Okay, thank you. I need a little vocabulary brush up. Okay. Do we have anybody here tonight from the prioritization committee?
Well, Don served on the prioritization committee. Mr. Gosney.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was any, anything that they wanted to add.
Mr. DeLeon also did, if he's still on the line.
Okay. I just wanted to know if, if as part of the process, you know, if that was built into the presentation, just anything that any of those communities would want to add. And then, so the, could you go over again what the, what the adjustments were between the prioritization committee and the facilities committee? There in the thesis, it says that there were adjustments made.
There were. So these four criteria, the school using temporary housing, lack of technology, infrastructure, enrollment projections versus capacity, and ADA compliance score were pulled out of the prioritization for the 19 sites and, and designated as a need that we should be looking at globally, right? The other thing that happened is this criteria of lack of colored, covered walkways or enclosed walkways was removed, mostly due to the fact that one, it would be unnecessarily an easy, cheap facility project, but there is ways to add covered or enclosed walkways to a campus without having to do a major rebuild. Also, the, most of our schools that really lack covered walkways or enclosed walkways have to do with, with portables, which are covered and other criteria.
And that was something that the prioritization thought was important, but facilities was like, eh, maybe not so much. Okay, got it. And then did, did the prioritization committee weigh in at all on the, on the weighting at all?
They did not.
And is there a reason for that or?
Staff was asked to complete that.
Staff was asked to complete that.
Yeah.
So answering the questions, I'm just gonna jump in. So the facilities committee didn't do the weighting either. So once it got to the facilities committee and the weighting needed to be applied, staff said the next step is to do the weighting. We said do the weighting. And now you guys have the weight.
Okay, got it. Okay. I think that's it. Just. Yeah, I think that's it. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the vocabulary update.
Um, my question is, can you please tell me what DSA means? I have a couple of questions, but that's one. What does DSA mean?
DSA is the Division of the State Architects Office. So they're the permitting agency that we go through when we build any project. They're kind of like the city permit. If you were to build something in the city Hercules, go to city Hercules, get a permit. We go to DSA. They oversee school construction and they're the one, the authority that issues the permit for us to build.
Okay. And M and O? I saw.
Maintenance and operations.
I'm sorry. I was talking when you were answering. What is it?
Maintenance and operations.
Okay, maintenance and operation. And then can you tell me who, who on the staff had input on the weighting? Like, Mr. Freeze, did you have input on the weighting?
Yes, I did.
Ms. Hooper, did you have input on the weighting?
Yes, I did.
And, and who else?
So that was pretty much from the facility side is Mrs. Hooper is responsible for facilities and myself for the department. We discussed this. We looked at the logical approach on how weighting would be applied to this, to the criteria using the metrics of health and safety. And that's how that was done.
Okay. So just you two did the weighting, correct? Okay. So can you go into a little bit more detail why the percent of black and brown youth and percent of students who are low income ESL or foster? Why you two gave that a, a two instead of a, what's the highest, three instead of a three?
So if you go back to the slide that shows the metric here, so the health and safety seemed to be the highest criteria to evaluate. As we look at our facilities, as we, you know, as you think about health and safety seismic concerns, ventilation, those were the ones that rose to the top. So that is the main reason why it didn't fall. The percentage of black and brown youth is an equity item. While it weighs important, it didn't raise the elevation of a three. It felt like it should be a two.
Did you take in consideration, when you're talking about health and safety, did you take in consideration social emotional health? About going to a building that looks dilapidated or looks like it's not of standard? Did you take into consideration that aspect of social emotional wellbeing as a part of health and safety?
I would probably say no, but there are other criteria that do speak to that. And so that, that is, you know, we do have age of buildings. We do have the functionality scores for the buildings themselves, which correctly relate back to the conditions and the dilapidated condition that you were referencing.
Can you go back to that? Can you go back to that slide that shows the weighting? Okay. So functionality is a two. Physical condition is a three. Then you have lack of windows and access to green space. That's a two. Can you tell me why that is a two? And physical condition now see is a three. Okay. So, but age of school is a one. So I'm gonna ask a question about the age of school and why it's a one and the lack of, the lack of view windows and access to green space on campus. Why that is a two?
So it's a two because you do have actually operable windows. They just may not be view windows. Our classroom height windows, that would be at a student height. And so you do have ventilation, but you may not have view windows to actually see out of the buildings themselves. And as you compare that to lack of ventilation, lack of operable windows, which is weighted a three, which falls right along with our forensic analytics assessment that was done during the reopening criteria for our schools and how we evaluated how we would address that criteria.
And then can you talk to me about age of school? And it's why is it just the age of the main permanent building? Would that be like the office or would that be just the building that was put there first? That could be a classroom building? Can you give me a little more detail about that?
The main reason it was put as a one is because age of building may not directly reflect to the condition of a building. So take for example, a Kensington, build back in the 50s. I wouldn't necessarily say that the age of the building would dictate that the building is in poor condition. So we want to look at the age of structure. Both, there are the conditions that would really dictate whether we would consider for replacement. That would be more concerns around seismic stability of the structure and not necessarily age. So there are plenty of buildings that are older school campuses, if you will, that wouldn't necessarily qualify for a replacement.
So you can have a building, you can have a older building, built in the 50s that has been kept up, that had, was built very well and it could still be very much usable. But then you have a building who was built in the 50s that has not been kept up or that was not built as well. And then that building would need to be ranked differently because that, the age does affect the physical condition of the building. Is that what we're saying?
Right. And that's why you have the other metrics, which would be the functionality and the condition score for those facilities.
Okay. And then just give me one second. When you talked about the prioritization committee, you had a slide that had a lot of different segments of our school community on it. Can we go back to that slide for just one second? Of those bulleted areas, how many of those were blank? People did not attend? It wasn't filled out?
The only one that was not filled out was one of the students from one of the feeder patterns. We only had one applicant from a particular feeder pattern. Otherwise, all of them were assigned in a particular person. I would have to go back and double check. I don't have at my fingertips what, who attended. However, we, we do have that information.
Okay. And then just, and I don't want to, I don't want to have you search your memory, but if you do know, do you know that they were well, well attended? You said you had five of those meetings. Were they well attended by all of those people who were assigned to attend? Or were they spot hopping on?
So there was one person appointed from each one of those groups.
Right.
So I would have to go back and check the actual attendance records to show exactly how many attended for each one of the meetings.
Okay. Um, I would be interested in knowing that, if that's okay. How many people attended each one of those five meetings and from what category they were from? That's it for my questions for now. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Christian.
All right. Thank you, President Phillips. As I begin to look at the, everything here, the first question is, who sits on the prioritization committee again?
So the slide is currently up. You can see the representation by committee or organization.
And, and based on that, you, you guys made the determination on how everything is going to be done.
Well, this particular group had looked at the criteria that was from the 2016 master plan, as well as the surveys that were sent out to the community and the public and basically condensed the items in your, either like items. And then they were voted on and determined. That's how we shortlisted basically the items and got down to the final list. It was all the committee work that got us to the final list.
Okay. So, so based on that, on how everything is being done, as far as facilities being done throughout the district. Now let me ask this question. Are we showing equity with all of our high schools throughout the district?
So.
Apparently the, only two of our high schools are listed as priority school sites. And so there is a known need for those two school sites to have additional work done.
So you say it's two school sites don't need work done?
No. So as far as the original, the original list of prioritization or priority school sites are actually, I forgot about Hercules. I'm sorry. So Hercules High, Richmond High and Kennedy High were all listed as schools on the priority school site list, knowing that, and how they get here is the fact that there is no deficiencies.
I see. So how is it that Kennedy and Richmond High is the last two schools in our area to be, you know, to really be looked at and why they are being passed over? And why are they at the bottom of the list of everything? And you, you know, we don't have to be real with a lot of stuff that, that's been going on for a long time. These schools been pushed out because they are more in the inner city.
Trusty Christian, we will have discussion, but right now we're on questions. And everything that I think you're about to say, and I think I agree with, I think I know what you're about to say, but if you could save that for discussion, that would be great.
Okay. The other question is, and, and why is it? You know, here we are. Why we continue to allow things to be what it is, what it is right now?
So I think we can help if you go back to the different weightings. One of the things that was really important in this process, and I was also involved and so were some of the other staff as we did it. When you take a look at the other elements that are brought in, previously it was all directly, when you had age of school as a higher priority, there wasn't that equity lens. Now, if you take a look, there's several things that bring an equity lens into this metric. And no specific school was singled out in this metric. There is no determination. This school is one or two. This is about what are the true needs of our totality? This is about what are the true needs of our totality of community? So having black and brown youth and having functionality score, looking at the lack of view windows and green spaces. Trustee Smith Folds just talked about how you feel when you walk onto a campus affects your academic achievement. The appearance of that campus, the fact that you can't look out a window or you don't have ventilation, changes the entire academic environment. That's now built into this weighting metric so that it's not rigged for any specific outcome. It's designed with the input of everyone and a metric that will create what everyone is asking to be the highest priority, which is equity for all students. And so that's why there's specifically no school mentioned in here. It's the specific conditions that have to be met. And that was what was really important in this run, to not have one weighting create a result where you discount others that are just as or more important to the community.
Okay. The other question is this, well, well, I, I save this for, for, for comments because I do have a lot other stuff to, to say. So I'll go ahead and pass, pass it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Phillips. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. I have four questions. My first one, actually Dr. World was just discussing this piece. Why was academic achievement not placed into a criteria or metric? Since we know physical appearance of a school affects academic achievement.
So this is a, when you deal with facilities, you have to deal with the condition of facilities for bond funds. What you do is the impact facilities have on academic achievement is built into the functionality score. Meaning, does it have all of the necessary components to operate in appropriate academic environment? That becomes critical. If you say that, hey, we want to have a STEM program and you have no science labs, that's going to play out in this metric. If you don't have ventilation, students can't do indoor learning the appropriate way. There, that's going to play into achievement. So the metrics were designed from a facilities lens because that's what bond funds must be focused on.
Yeah, thank you. So to follow up on that, obviously ventilation affects academic achievement, right? Which is why we're putting it on the criteria and metric. Because a student cannot learn being hot or with a headache, right? Because of the heat. Same thing, academic achievement just mentioned. Why was it not put as part of maybe criteria number five around equity? I guess I'm still confused on your answer, Dr. Wall. Maybe you can go a little deeper.
And Trustee Gonzalez, why? Remember, these criteria and metrics were driven by community input, not only from the 2016 master plan, but also by the committee that was put together and the committee and the population at large that commented and provided input. And so our, we guided the process and helped them through, but this is a community process that got us to where we are with the metrics criteria.
And there was this, there was extensive discussion in 2016 about having that criteria on the, on the, on the list. And it was, it was really determined, you know, there, what was the best way to judge what academic performance was, was a question. Which, which, what would we use for a metric for that? Caused a lot of controversy and discussion within the committee. As well as, you know, is it, is it like the chicken and the egg? Or it's there are other outside influences that are causing a difference in academic performance? So like if you had a stellar principle and that principle was just like making it happen, should that mean that you don't get rebuilt because you had that, that person that was the driving force of vision? Also, there was questions about like, well, wait a minute, just because we're doing it well means that we shouldn't be, we should be penalized. And so those were the kind of discussions that happened in 2016. It really didn't come up this time in 2020. But it was quite the topic in, in 2016. And, and it just, the determination from the committee was that that was not the appropriate criteria to judge which schools would be rebuilt or not.
So it aligned more to the title one. If you take a look there that you're really dialing back to the unduplicated count, the percent of free and reduced lunch and English learner, foster youth. So it's really tying into the same metrics that the federal government uses for title one eligibility.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all of you for that. Could you share with me a little bit more about the survey? What were the responses from the community? Was it, was there like equity around voice? Did we have a good number of results from each community? Or was it heavy on a certain community? I haven't seen the.
As far as we responded, we did have coverage from all of our feeder pattern areas. And there was some difference between who responded, which ones had a higher rate than others. This is posted on our website. I do not remember off the top of my head. But we did have pretty good, well, first coverage. I do believe that our Kennedy area did not have as strong of showing as some of the other space, the other groups. But this was also the kicking off point, right? So we used it as a place to start and not a place to end. And so these, the results of this as well, you know, the, the criteria suggested there were, were added forward for consideration, but we were up to thirty-two criteria that were new, two of which were added by the prioritization committee members. In addition to the original 2016, so we had a huge like pool of criteria to choose from to narrow down to what we ended up with as a manageable group.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my last question is more about timeline moving forward. I understand kind of what comes next, but what is the actual timeline look like?
Well, there's a, there's a desire if tonight the, the criteria is passed, that we would be able to gather the data together to be able to apply to the school sites and, and be at the next facilities committee meeting and come back to you on the twenty-third. Beyond that process though, and, and we're really like the, the list of prioritization is one component of the overall master plan. The other components of the master plan will take a bit longer. We are currently doing the HVAC study of all of our schools that don't have air conditioning. And they've been to about two thirds of the campuses so far, but we've got another third to go. And then the actual report to be written and some consensus that comes out of that to create options as well as looking at student housing. So those components are going to have to come more closely to the fall.
But one of the things for the board to understand is once you've adopted the actual prioritization list, that allows facilities to then go out and engage with plan design for those first, second, third schools. Get that plan design submitted to DSA because nothing can be built until you go through that process. So every single week that we delay, moving forward towards that implementation is another month, two months, three months before shovel goes in the ground. So part of the, not urgency, but in a sense deliberate focus is to get moving forward. I'll be talking about that more as we look at access to funding and how assessed value plays into when we want to do construction. And so the, the goal is to get that done in, in the next month to come back to the board with the actual prioritization to then begin the engagement with plan design so that that can move to DSA so we can actually get shovels in the ground in the twenty-two fiscal year.
And just to point out, the timing is very important to move along as, as we see in the later presentation as we talk about cost and escalation and the value of our dollar as, as time goes on.
Okay, thank you, everyone. President Phillips, that was my last question.
Thank you, sir. I just have a couple of clarifying questions. So the facilities master plan or the ranking of the schools? That is being redone, correct?
The ranking of the schools is being redone.
Okay. And so some schools can move up and some schools can move down on the list, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And this, these criteria or this ranking that you are recommending that we pass this evening, that will determine where schools fall on the new list, correct?
Yes.
And after you guys apply this ranking to the schools, that's how the new list is generated, is that correct?
Correct.
Once that new list is generated, is that new list official? Or does that new list come back to the board for final approval?
That list will come back to the facilities committee and back to the board for approval.
Okay, so before there is an official new list, this board, all five of us will take a vote to approve that list, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so people have concerns about where a school may fall. When we, when the list comes back, we could, if there are issues, address it at that time, correct?
It would be up to the board to approve the project list and or adjust the list.
Right. And when you say the project list, we're talking about the list in the ranked order, right?
The ranking, yes.
So that, that project list with the ranking, that will come back to the board. So Mr. Christian and Mrs. Smith Folds and Mrs. Reckler, Mr. Gonzalez, Hoyle, myself will all be able to vote on whatever the final thing is before it's approved, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I do not have any more questions public. We are going to start public comment. We, if you have a public comment, please raise your hand as we're going to take the hands that are raised when the comments, when public comment starts, okay? So
Mr. Phillips. No, I just don't know if you saw my hand because it's can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
Mr. Freeze and Ms. Hooper, the community did not have input on the weighting. It was just you two, correct?
That is correct.
Do you think it would have been valuable to have community input on the weighting? Which is going to be used to generate the list?
So the community input was part of the process. When we took it to facilities, the facilities direction was that the work the implemented, implementation committee was complete in that staff at this point would assign the weight. And so this is how we move forward.
So the last question is, who told staff to assign the weight and not get input from the community? You had to have that direction from someone. Who told you to do that, that way?
From the
Okay.
I'll jump, I'll jump in. So they brought criteria to the committee. And then the committee reviewed the criteria. And that's how we came up with what they showed you where some of it was applied to everybody, not just the nineteen schools.
Right.
Then they needed to do the weighting. And so the question essentially was, who does the weighting? Whether it's the prioritization committee or staff? And staff was asked to do the weighting. And this is in facilities committee, staff was asked to do the weighting. I, I mean, not, not to do the weighting, but to create the weighting. Cause the weighting hasn't been done yet. So it hasn't been applied to the school, so we don't know necessarily where it's going to fall out. But to answer your question is, in facilities committee, when they said that they needed to do this, I asked them to create the weighting. And the reason that I asked them to create the weighting is because, one, I think it's their job. But in addition to that, I think having staff create the weighting helps us to know that we are focusing on what needs to be focused on and to make sure that our facilities are correct for our district and not what is politically hot, which has happened in the past where folks are lobbying for this and lobbying for that and lobbying for this. So basically I asked them to do their job.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comment. And I think, and one thing I'm just in the, in the next answer, because I want to piggyback on that a little bit. Because once they apply the criteria, the, the weights to the schools, a list will be generated. And I think once that list is generated, there's going to be a whole bunch of folks in the community who are going to be probably emailing all of you who are in the Zoom right now or calling or whatnot about what the final list looks like. But we're gonna go to public comment. And Mr. Aurelio.
Yes, we are ready to go. We have three hands raised. First hand will be Don Gosney. Mr. Gosney, you are free to begin.
Yeah, first I want to thank the board for allowing me to serve on the prioritization committee. When the board created the prioritization committee, one of the well-intentioned feel-good efforts was to include students to help decide the criteria and the weighting. Nearly half of the committee members were students with one coming from an elementary school. Sadly, the attendance for these students was minimal. These young people may have had some familiarity with their own schools, but I'm not sure that they fully understood about property taxes, bond programs, or had a familiarity with this actual facilities across the district. Sometimes we have to be practical when we set up these working groups. As a member of this prioritization committee, I tried to focus on the actual buildings and this included their age and their condition. Of course, we had to focus on the needs of the community such as windows and HVAC systems to allow for ventilation. Where I had some problems though, was when the community, committee focused on the demographics of today while ignoring what we're building, that we're building schools to last fifty to seventy-five years. For instance, the affluence of the neighborhood around the school, the ethnicity of the students attending the school today, and even how, how many foster students are enrolled at a school this year. The things change and we need to embrace those changes. I also believe that we should treat each and every one of our students the same. But that's what equal rights is actually all about. Singling out any group of students based on any criteria and giving them special considerations is the exact kind of discrimination that many of us fought so hard to overcome fifty years ago. But many of our neighbors are embracing it once again. Equal rights means that everyone is treated the same regardless of the origin of their ancestors, their genders, the affluence of their community or their religion. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Jose De Leon, you may unmute.
Good afternoon, board. Doctor Hurst. Just a couple historical things I wanted to point out as I've been in the district from seeing the rebuilt at Helms and the effect of what new facility does to a community. When Helms was rebuilt, it energized the San Pablo and the Richmond community. The school grew to over one thousand one hundred students. And there were many projects and successes built on feeling that the community was being respected. Historically, some schools have been left aside. Projects been promised. And then suddenly the money disappears for, for something else. We, I will talk specifically about Richmond High School. We appreciate the new quad, the new health center and what it was, or what is a reduced practice gym, minimized weight room and, and, and dance room. That was a project that was probably ten years in the making that finally got done at a reduced and, and reduced, so meaning using the funds allocated ten years ago to try to build something now. It really reduced the, the amount of work that could be done for the students. Even though it's, it's appreciated, it, it does feel looking it, it does feel looking at the whole process of two thousand sixteen to now that, uh, it seems like, um, and I will talk, uh, as a community member, uh, as a process to placate uh, the community, but not really to do something substantial, uh, for the students. Um, one of the things that I always remember, um, that's talking to students and students telling us during this two thousand sixteen, um, priority, uh, facilities, uh, workshops, that, you know, they felt they suspected that um, they have found places on campus that their brothers and sisters from years back um, had left, um, taggings or, or little gifts for the future, uh, schools and it has never, had never been corrected or updated. So just, uh, wanted to make sure that historically, um, some of the, the flatland schools have been neglected or promised projects that have not come through. And from this facilities, uh, standpoint, I just wanna make sure that, um, we look at all angles and what does uplift the community.
Thank you, Mr. Deon. Our last speaker, uh, Maisha Harris Gash, you may unmute.
Good evening. As a graduate of Kennedy High School, I'm offended. Kennedy is the only high school still on its original building. That's not the building my dad attended. I'm offended, I'm sorry, I'm in relation to, uh, Richmond High School, so my dad went to Richmond High, so that's not the building that he originally attended. I'm offended because you insult my Richmond Unified School District intelligence. You didn't need a metrics to know that Kennedy needed to be rebuilt over ten years ago. It was on the list, there's public documentation. This metric system is a way to make you, whoever that is, feel better about the systemic injustice, discrimination and bias from previous boards toward Kennedy. Some ask me why I stay at Kennedy. I stay because I want my students to know that in spite of this systemic discrimination, you are important. That I believe you are important enough for me as an alum to help you see your greatness in spite of how this district treats you and values you, which is sorely lacking in relation to the resources that are provided to Kennedy. With me, it's a love thing, it's a heart thing. It's my purpose and it's my passion to be in servant leadership to my students. So that's why I stay so beyond the building until there's a new one that they can see that they can succeed, that they can soar, because we as equals, that's what we do, we don't fly, we soar. And that's why I stay, because I'm committed, I'm dedicated, and they are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes comments for this item.
Thank you very much. Um, so Board, I wanna say something and, and, and do a little context. So one, we just had a retreat and, um, and in the retreat, uh, we were, uh, advised that we should focus on the, the what, uh, and not the how. Um, focus on the ends, not the means, meaning what we wanna see. So I'm gonna try to model that, uh, in this, uh, discussion. Uh, if you can try to focus on, uh, the what you wanna see, uh, and, and, and not the how, that would be good. Um. The other thing that I wanna say is, and this is a little difficult for me. But there's a process and there's multiple steps in the process, and I'm gonna ask the board to ju- to trust the process. And it might end up the way you want it. And if it doesn't, when the list comes out, we can start throwing cake and everything else about where things should be on the list, up or down or whatever. So, um, but this is just the first step in a process, so, um, and again, if the waiting does not work the way somebody thinks it should, when that list comes back, we can have a full-on discussion about whether things turned out the way we thought that they should. Uh, but with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve this, uh, criteria and waiting.
President Phillips, I'll make a motion to approve the criteria.
Um, thank you very much, sir. And trustee Reckler?
I'll second.
Seconded, so it's removed by Gonzalez Hoy and seconded by Reckler.
So for a discussion, I don't really have, uh, anything except that it would have been nice to hear from some of the people that were on the prioritization committee and now finding out that most of them were students. I mean, what a great way to elevate student voice, so it would have been, um, great to have them, but other than that, I don't have anything, and thank you for the presentation.
Mrs. Smith Folds?
So I feel really uncomfortable, but the waiting was done just by two people. I feel really uncomfortable that the waiting was done just by two people that don't represent the majority of the community that the buildings are gonna be applied to, that the community that it's gonna be used to, that makes me feel very uncomfortable. I do wanna talk a minute about, if we take the best school in the district, let's say the best high school, facilities, all of that, the best facility high school in the district, and we set that as a standard and then we build every other school to hit that same standard, that's equalizing. That's, that's what, that's what it means to have something equal. Every school is at the exact same standard that we as a board and as a district set. When you're talking about equity, equity is when you need to center now the most marginalized group that you have, that's, you're centering them right now. While you're working on equalizing things, your, your equity isn't centering those voices of the voiceless and of the marginalized. So it's, it's, we have to be very clear on what our intention is, on the what, the what. So for my what is very clear, my what is to centralize the voice of the marginalized students in our district. My what is to bring every school up into the standard of the best school, of a best school, what a best school in our district looks like in every school, no matter the zip code, no matter the location, no matter the community now or in the future, will be at that standard. Every student deserves that, every teacher deserves that. And we did not hear a teacher call in from one area and say, I had to go into my room and clean out uh, rodent feces and leftover debris before those kids came back to spring. Now, every area called and said that, uh, we got an equalized problem, but we only heard that from one area. One high school said that they had teachers that had to come in there and clean out because their facility didn't have the value that everyone else has. This is a value issue. Do you value all the students who go to our different facilities the same? And the answer by virtue of the historical knowledge is no. You do not value all the kids that go into these buildings the same. It is a social emotional thing, going into a building that does not look clean, that has not been upkept and has no windows, that's a value issue. You can't feel good about that. Let me come to where you live and where you work and take every window out, remove all the green spaces, make it compact, old, dusty and dirty, and tell you to perform highly at your job, you could not do it. Not for a sustained amount of time. This is a value issue, so I, I'm telling you this as plain as I can. No matter what that order comes in, no matter how you rank it, it is a value issue you're placing on these students and their experience in West Contra Costa Unified School District. It's not okay. It is not okay to have students go into this situation every day for a hundred and eighty days for twelve to thirteen years at every level from our elementary, middle and high school, it's not okay.
So, uh, uh, Board, in the, in the what, right? So.
Oh, sorry, what, what I want you to do, do better. Value these kids, value their experience, that's what I want you to do. As a, as our staff is to do better valuing these students, black, brown and other. But value these marginalized students, so I say black, brown and other. That's what I want, thank you, President Phillips, that's the what.
Thank you, ma'am, and, and remember, if this does not work out the way somebody thinks it should, it will come back to us, right? So you, trustee Smith Folds, you, you look at yourself as a backstop, if you would like, it, it, the ball will come back. Uh, Mr. Krishna?
Yeah, thank you, uh, President Phillips, and, um, you know, just to say this, it's disparities in this district. And to know that stuff has not been done right throughout the years here in this district, understanding that how stuff has been done, especially with the inner cities, and especially how, uh, Kennedy and Richmond High has been treated. Uh, El Cerrito has a nice school, Deanser has a nice school, Pinot has a ni- nice high school. But yet you say it's not time for Kennedy. It's not time for Richmond High, it's not time for these inner city schools. We know exactly what we doing. Our hearts are not right. And like I say, you can't put new wine into old wine skins. Think about it. It would not work. We've been playing around throughout the years. Kennedy was promised, money was taken and put in other places. As I look back over the years, I see the, how stuff has been done. Equity has not been done across the board. When you're talking about the conditions of schools, I remember I worked at Richmond High School during the summer, summer school, you had mice running in the, in, in, in the, in the area where students would eat their lunch. How infested these schools are and how terrible these schools are. But yeah, the way you got prioritized, what, only two people make decisions? Huh? Is it right? No. If for me to sit up here and vote for this, I'm not, look, I wanna see stuff done right for our kids, for our community. And if we don't stand for what's right, then we will fall for anything or do anything. It's just like, and I'm gonna just say this, it's just like the elephant in the room. You have the flatlands versus the, 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 you have the hills and the flatlands. There's disparities in this area and it's been here and it's been here all the time, but nobody don't wanna talk about it. People don't wanna talk about it. I say that Kennedy, Richmond High be put on top of that list to get done. And that's where I stand. Thank you.
I just wanna remind that this came through the facilities committee. So it was recommended, it came to the board from, from, from you and I, Mr. Krishna. Uh, but, but I hear you, I hear you, it's just the what, your what is that at the end of the day, you wanna see Richmond High Kennedy on the top of the list, the list hasn't come to us yet. Uh, this is just a step in creating the list. But you, that's your what, you wanna see Richmond High Kennedy rebuilt, I, um, I got you.
I just don't wanna play no more games, I'm tired.
Alright.
Thank you.
Not playing games, I hear you. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy?
Thank you, um, I agree with all the comments from my colleagues, uh, from all of you, um. I, I, I'm not gonna go into too much detail, but I'll just say I did feel uncomfortable about the weighing. Uh, I don't think it should have been done by two people. I do absolutely appreciate both your work, Mr. Freeze and Ms. Mahia Hooperks. I know it's a very thankless position to bring these things and no matter what, someone's gonna be upset later on about where we put school, so I am thankful for both of you and your work. But I, I'm, I was, I wasn't very happy to hear that the weighing was done by just you two. I do think that there should have been more people who weighed in on that. Um, being that said, um, I am gonna vote on this just because of the urgency to move this forward, uh, the urgency to make sure that the critical needs, uh, also getting pushed through, um, and that we can start the process to rebuild most of our schools. Um, I agree, uh, as you all know, I was the chair of measure our committee to get it, to get the bond. All, I think everybody here worked incredibly hard to get that bond through, um, through that campaign, we promised Kennedy to be rebuilt, um, and it is time that we do that. So I know we're not there yet, but just to be clear, no matter what comes forward to us, I will absolutely, I, to channel President Phillips, I will trust the process. If, if Richmond High and Rich, and, and Kennedy High are not on the top, I will definitely throw a.
Throw the cake, throw the cake.
That's right, that's right, and then we can discuss everything else, of course, but just you all know, my priority is Kennedy High and Richmond High, um, from an equity lens, um, because every kid goes through our high schools. And even if a, elementary school has not been rebuilt, every kid should get at least a high school that's been rebuilt, uh, in my opinion, and it's time. Um, and I think that if we wanna pass another bond another day in ten years, whenever it is, we can't just keep saying that we're gonna build something and not do it. Um, so that's gonna be my priority moving forward and what I'm gonna look forward to seeing in the, in the near future. Um, and I'll just finish by saying thank you to staff, uh, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, um, I just will make a couple of brief comments. This, this conversation wasn't necessarily supposed to be about particular schools, it was supposed to be about the, the, the criteria and the, and the waiting. Uh, and I almost feel like we're voting on the final list right now, um, but it is evident that every school, high school has been rebuilt, uh, except you. Uh, and that's not right. Uh, I spent a lot of time looking at the rankings, uh, or the criteria. Uh, and if you go back and look at the facilities meeting, I mean, I asked questions until I think they wanted to, to get out of there and tell me to just go home. Uh, but I actually think that the criteria, when I look at it, uh, like for example, windows, lack of green space, there's a bunch of different things on there, ventilation, uh, that I think actually will serve in the waiting, not that I've done the waiting, I haven't, but I actually really spent a lot of time looking at it. Um, I think that there are a lot of criteria that actually will benefit, uh, Richmond High School and Kennedy High School. Uh, and that's one of the reasons I am comfortable starting the process. Uh, you know, if, if the process doesn't turn out right, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, I'll be right there with you throwing cake. Uh, but I am comfortable, uh, in, in letting the weights be applied. Uh, and like I said, I've looked at it and although, you know, I'm not, you know, a construction person or whatnot, uh, logically, I can see how those two schools benefit from the criteria that has been put forth by staff. So, um, that said, um, I wanna call the vote. Uh, and again, this is just to start the process, to get a draft list and a, and uh, emphasis on a capital D, uh, this is for a draft list, not a final list. But we can't do anything if we don't get a draft list. So I'm gonna start the vote, uh, Mrs. Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Uh, Smith Folds, the way you start something is the way you finish it, it has to be done correctly. I do not believe two people should be the ones, we have a new superintendent, we have to wait it correctly and have more input and diversity in our input, Smith Folds, no.
And I'm, and I'm gonna say this, the process needs to be done right. It really does. I vote no.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, President Phillips, uh, apologize for taking a second, um. Like I mentioned, I am uncomfortable about the weighing. But I do think that we have to start. Otherwise, every, like Dr. World said, it's gonna, every week's gonna push us back. So I'm going to vote yes.
And, um, I'll vote yes as well. Uh, thank you for the motion carries, uh, three to two. We're going to go to the next item, which is C2, approve the bond program management plan.
Mr. Phillips, you're on mute if you're talking, but I'm not sure if you're talking or not.
I wasn't talking.
And I think Ms. Payne may, oh, she's not frozen, okay, I thought you were frozen for a minute.
I was muted, I believe she's trying to pull up the presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, it's a pleasure to be here, um, before you this evening, um, to share with you the bond program management plan. Um, and you know, after the, um, conversation that we've really just had, I think it puts even more further emphasis on how important this is. Um, because our community has been very fortunate. Um, we are two decades into our bond program and we have an immense responsibility to ensure that every dollar is spent, um, in accordance with district policy regulation. And it is extremely important to us, um, that everybody knows where every dollar goes and how we are managing the program. And that's why tonight I'll be sharing with you our current bond program management plan, which is a document that essentially captures all of the different processes that we do in our day-to-day management of the bond program and results in the reporting that we're able to provide. So the bond program management plan itself has two components. The first is a narrative. So the narrative is broken into four sections. The first section starts with program and operations and it talks about critical components, including things like, um, how we communicate, the websites that we use, reporting, um, the different departments that are involved in a project throughout the district. It transitions into a fiscal narrative that describes very specifically the budget management process, invoicing and financial reporting that we do. Then it goes to an administrative section, which really focuses on the contracting and procurement of all of the bond expenditures. And it ends with a program management section that really describes the design process, the construction projects, the construction process and the agencies that have jurisdiction throughout the process. So for each narrative section, there's a corresponding appendices. The appendices are filled with the forms that we use, with the instructions, flow charts, all kinds of different pieces of how we do our work each day in an effort to be extremely transparent and consistent in our practice. And so with that, I'd really like to share with you some of the features of the plan and why we think this plan, um, is something that we're extremely proud to share with you tonight. And the first is that we believe this plan is collaborative. Uh, when we first started working on this plan, we built a website for it. Um, we brought monthly updates to facilities committee and to the CBOC. This plan is what it is today because we listened and we learned through active consultation with our CBOC and our community members about how we could better demonstrate and really provide transparency to the work that we do. Throughout this entire process, not only did we collect public comments, but we encouraged them and we intend to continue to receive, um, public comments and opportunities to continue to improve our plan. We also believe that our plan is supplemental. What it describes is the will and the way of how we implement our program. There are the four corners of the law for which so much of how projects are managed is governed by a series of codes. That's our job to know, but what's most important is to understand that there is a process and a consistent application of how we do our work. In our program management plan, we were sure to include website references that not only navigate our district website, but also the agencies that govern our work. We created an acronym guide that we heard from the community. What is DSA? What are, what is the alphabet soup of a construction industry that is very nuanced? And so in the program management plan, we have an appendices that's just dedicated to breaking down, what are all of these different acronyms that you so often see? We believe that the plan as it is presented not only provides further resources and reference for our team members so that they understand what to do and why we do it, but it also provides that transparency and education more broadly to the community. We also believe that our plan demonstrates the ongoing implementation and improvement that our community expects and more importantly, that they deserve. And so this plan, while we know that the people working in the program may change, we believe that the organizational structure and the controls that have been put into place demonstrate alignment with audit recommendations and best practices. And so as a result, we don't bring this forward today just to say, hey, we have a plan. We think it's great, check it out, let us know what you think. We bring it today as a commitment. This is the work that we do each and every day. And furthermore, we intend for this to be something that is a living document that comes back before the board at minimum annually with the certification that this is how we are continuing to do our work. So I'd like to share with you a couple of things you might find in the plan. This is really the foundation of our program and this is our proposal approval checklist. And part of what it represents is any expenditure of bond funds goes through a three-way approval that values three very different perspectives. Any proposed expenditure is approved from a contracting and procurement lens. It's reviewed and approved from a fiscal lens and it's reviewed and approved from a facilities lens. And this ensures that we have alignment and a demonstrated approval. This executed documents actually uploaded into our financial system. So at any point today or 10 or 20 years from now, someone could look in our audited financial system and see the demonstrated approvals associated with any proposed expenditure. One of the areas that we have really worked very closely over the last couple of years building is collaboration within our department. And I think these two items that you'll also find in the plan really demonstrate that. The item that you see on the left is our cost code explanation. This was really born out of a collaboration of our fiscal coordinator and our project managers. Because one of the things that's really key when you're reporting financial history across two decades and as we continue to look forward across future decades is consistency in how we are coding the information, reporting the information, and then, um, understanding the data that we have. So what, what this is, is this basically takes the account code structures that are used in our system and it aligns them with the activities that you would see on a construction site to ensure a consistent application across our coding and our reporting. The item that you see on the right is really a collaboration between fiscal and contracts. Because in the bond program, when someone approves an invoice, it requires four approvals. It's the approval from the pro- project manager or from the department on the invoice itself. And then on top of it is this analysis of the payment approval form, which is really a forecasting guide such that when decisions are being made, all of the information is displayed. And so what this presents is essentially the contract status for forecasting, um, and for understanding exactly where we are and what every approval means. We believe that this plan, um, really demonstrates and documents the work that we do every day. Um, but we believe that the value that it brings is that this plan was made in active consultation with the community, that it valued diverse perspectives and different areas of expertise. And this is very uniquely crafted for our district to ensure that we continue to implement not only the policies, um, but the standards of care that have been established. As part of developing this plan, we have a suite of adopted financial monthly reports that report the entire bond program and are brought forward on a monthly basis, um, representing our program from fiscal year one to present. Because we have accurate information, we have been able to actively and aggressively pursue additional dollars. So in the last 10 years alone, we have gotten over $140 million in state facility funds that then come back to our local program and make our local dollars go that much further. Just recently, last month, we were apportioned by the state allocation board, another $4.7 million for CTE facilities that were built 10 years ago. And those dollars are going to come to our bond fund and help us continue to move our projects forward. The last piece that we think is really important about the plan and the value that it brings, is it something that's going to continue to adapt and improve? And that's something that we can only do together. Um, but it's something that's absolutely imperative to ensuring that every bond dollar can go as far as it possibly can and that all of those decisions are as transparent as they should be. And so with that, we believe that the strength of the plan is in implementing the plan and that the board will give life to the plan by approving it tonight and that we will continue to bring it forward as part of our annual update on the implementation of the program as not only our commitment to our board, but also to our community that we are continuing to uphold the recommendations that have been made, um, from years past about how to implement, um, the highest level of controls for our program. And with that, um, I'll conclude my presentation and open it up for, um, any comments.
Thank you very much, um, board. It's eight thirteen, um, based on our agenda, we're trying to get into closed session at nine thirty. Um, so we've got a lot to do. Uh, that said, Mrs. Reckler, clarify a question.
Thank you, yes. Uh, so thank you for the presentation, thank you for being here. Um, my questions are, um, can you, uh, tell me where, where you are on, um, wrapping up the forensic accounting investigation? When we met in April for the CBOC, um, there was going to be a meeting with Heidi Bailey and I. And I'm wondering if that happened and if you're still on track, uh, for the end of calendar year 2021 to wrap.
So yes, um, and part of how this is linked, um, is there is actually an appendix in the bond program management plan that identifies all of the recommendations that were made in the 2016 forensic accounting investigation, as well as the recommendations made by Moss Adams from the fiscal year 2017 through 2019, program effectiveness audit. And there's an appendices in the back of the program management plan that identifies all of those recommendations. It identifies that that recommendation has been deemed implemented by our third-party auditor or if it's in a future phase, either phase 1.5 or 2, which are the two phases that are set to commence by the end of this calendar year. And it also identifies the location in the program management plan that is the demonstration of that recommendation. And so we thought it was really important, so much of this program management plan was really born out of the recommendations of years past about how to implement proper controls and how to demonstrate and document them. And so throughout the plan, so many of these recommendations, they're aligned. So a recommendation from 2016 may be add the date executed to the form. The form is in the appendices and so that reference will be there. And then the form is described in the narrative, how we use the form. And that's another reason why we think it's so important that we have this plan and that we continue to follow the plan, we continue to certify that it's being followed because those recommendations of previous years, we want to ensure that our implementation of the controls that demonstrate the implementation of those recommendations continue to happen throughout the life of the program and not just when the auditor is double checking to see if that work has been done.
Okay, so we, you are on track, um, for the effectiveness and performance audit and the, the FAI by 2021?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that is my only question. I have some accolades, but I'm not allowed to say them now, I have to say them.
Ms. Payne, is this, um, management plan, is it in multiple languages? Is it somewhere on, like, is it, well, let me ask this, is it publicized anywhere?
Yes, so we, um, published it on the website on May 14th. Um, we presented to the CBOC. Um, it was published as part of the facilities committee agenda. Um, and so it is only in one language. I will caution collectively the narrative and the forms, it's about 300 pages altogether. Um, but I do think that, you know, it's an excellent recommendation if it's one that you're on the eve of making.
So it, I'm just trying to figure out how we get this information out to the greatest number of members of our community. And 300 pages is a lot, it, it's a lot of pages. But if there was a way to summarize, synthesize something in, in the languages of our community, then it would help everyone be engaged and invested in this process. Because I think that's your ultimate goal.
Well, and one of the things that we wanted to do so that we could be more transparent in what all of this means, um, is I think that the PMP provides an excellent opportunity for educational videos. And so recommendation came from the CBOC that there are components of the program management plan. If we did a video that described, here's how we use this form, here's how we manage our budget, here's how, this is what the design process looks like. How does a project move from an idea through to, through to construction? And then what does the closeout look like? And so our next objective with the program management plan was to shoot a series of videos that would then become educational resources. And I'm sure if we did it, we could have those translated so that it would be a way to really kind of breathe meaning into the form and how we use the form. And in a lot of ways, kind of demystify this process, right? In construction, there's this acknowledgement that something's happening when you see a building. But that idea for the building and that approval for the building is something that potentially happened 10 years previous. And so part of what we really want to do with this plan is make our process and all of the different components as transparent as possible. And so, um, that, that was kind of the next step was we were going to do a series of videos and kind of break it into its different pieces. And that's also why we kind of organized it the way that we did, separating fiscal from contracts, from project management. Because everybody kind of has a different set of questions or a different thing that they want to know more about. And so there is some duplication in the program management plan because each one of those things is so integrated one to the other. But we did think it was important to separate it for that reason, just the same, so that people could go to the place where they had the most interest or maybe the most questions about how we're doing our work.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. That was my only question, I'm glad that you are looking into, uh, making sure that all languages are represented or the majority of the languages we have in the district are represented in this plan. Thank you.
Mr. Othury Christian.
I have any questions?
Mr. Dimitri Gonzalez Foy.
Thank you, I don't have any questions, President Phillips.
I don't have any questions either. Mr. Aurelio, do we have any, um, public comment on this item?
We have one hand raised.
Okay, please call it.
Mr. Doug Gosny, you may unmute and begin your comment.
Thank you very much. You know, this is a great tool that is long overdue. Sadly though, it's not properly named. It should be renamed the Melissa Payne Project Management Plan, a Melissa Payne production. This was her baby and she deserves credit for it. It was a true labor of love. Dr. Hurst, Melissa deserves a pay raise for this, or at the very least, a parking space with her name on it. My recommendation to the board is to approve this PMP and give it your stamp of approval. Do it tonight, do it now, do it quick. Thank you.
And that concludes comments.
Thank you, Ms. Gosny. Um, so, working out a motion to- So working out a motion to approve this item?
I'll move that.
Mrs. Smith falls, seconded by Ruckler. All right. Is there any discussion, Board? Go ahead, Mrs. Ruckler.
Ms. Payne, you're the first person in the history of, at least as long as I've been here, to have Don Gosny say something positive. So that's a major accomplishment. But really, thank you for your work. This is a humongous, humongous task, humongous undertaking. It is a major accomplishment. It was a tremendous amount of work. This is best-in-class work. You know, are you being contacted by anybody about how did it or how you did it or anything? Because if not, it should be coming. And thank you. It's really tremendous. That's it.
Mrs. Smith falls.
I don't have any comment except to say thank you. 300 pages is a lot of work, and I would be remiss not to say that 300 pages is a lot of work. And thank you for, well, I do have a comment now, Mr. Phillips. Thank you for extending it and to the point to where you want to be as transparent and as inclusive as possible, because that's a really important factor that we as a district have to stop. Start adopting at every step of the way. Transparency and inclusion at every step of the way. So I appreciate that, Ms. Payne. Thank you.
Mr. Othury Christian, do you have any comment?
I have no comments. This is great. Thank you.
Mr. Dimitri Gonzalez for?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to say thank you, Ms. Payne, for your work. I love the idea of giving you a parking space with your name on it. And I really just wanted to express, I really like the idea of your educational videos, especially if they're short, right, and in different languages. I think that would really help as a resource when we have items like this on the agenda, so we can share those and educate our community on the bond program. So I really loved that idea and seeing what else comes forward. Thank you for your work.
Thank you as well. And Mrs. Ruckler? It's been promptly moved and seconded to approve this item. Can you start the vote?
Yes, I can, Ruckler, yes.
Smith falls, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you very much. Everybody's emotion carries unanimously. And we're going to move on to item C3, which is approved the Hercules Middle and High School Educational specification.
And Mrs. Mahia Hooper tonight is going to do that presentation for us?
Ms. Mahia Hooper, you're muted.
And I started off so well. Let's try this again. Sorry about that. Thank you for having us back. Tonight, we're going to talk about the educational master, or the educational specification for the Hercules Critical Needs Project. As discussed earlier, the Critical Needs Project for these campuses was to create a new science complex that would serve both the high school and middle school campus. The existing middle and high school do have science facilities, however, for the amount of program that is offered at these schools, there really is only one full-size lab and several smaller classroom-sized labs that do not suit the size of our classroom, our class sizes, nor have all of the proper safety equipment. And so we are looking to create a new complex or building to be able to accommodate these programs. Educational specifications are an important tool that we use to help ensure the standard across different campuses and is based off of our district-wide educational specification. The purpose of them is to really relate the educational program to the physical space. So when we start talking about what we offer within our program, we have to think about it in a way of, if we are doing certain kind of experiments, what kind of tools and facilities does that need to be able to accomplish that? And moving forward throughout the document here, on page 11, we list all of the general requirements for all spaces. So this is an application across many different types of spaces, not just science, but to make sure that we communicate commonly asked questions of our architects so that we have consistent answers and make sure they have the information needed to be able to complete the design in a timely manner to the district's level of understanding. Beyond that, we have individual pages that describe the type of spaces that you need for each program. And obviously, since this is a science building, the science labs are the main feature within this document. So this describes a flexible, modern environment that's able to meet our science requirements. We did review this both at the district level for the with the district-level staff that are in charge of science to make sure that we are hitting all of the marks needed, as well as the site principals. And so you'll see the listing there. And in addition to this, we have the, what we call the space checklist, which is actually the the program need of the document that talks about the quantity of spaces that we're anticipating, their square footage sizes. So this lists the draft of what that expect is. There will be some refinement in the support spaces because it's required for the architect to actually work out some of the components of electrical and other support spaces dependent on the site-specific needs. So there will be some adjustments as we move along, which is why you see these empty columns. So the SD and DD columns refer to different phases in the architectural design. Schematic design is SD, and it's the first phase of design. DD is design development, and it's the second phase. So as we develop our plans, we double-check this back to the original ed spec to see that we are meeting the requirements that were set forward. And if we're not, we recognize that decisions were made in a collective group to make sure that the that we are holding true to our educational specification. So that's the components of this document. And we are looking for this to be moved forward and approved so that it can be the baseline for the Hercules project.
Thank you, ma'am. Trust the Ruckler, clarify a question?
Yeah, I have a couple. The first one is, I guess there are two specs, one for middle school and one for high school. Which one did you guys adopt?
So this combines both of them together. So that in the space checklist, we did identify high school labs versus middle school labs. So there's four labs for each school.
Okay, so it was to the high school level, high school spec?
So there will be four labs. Three of them would be a flexible science lab and one more specialized for chemistry.
Okay. And then were there adaptations or changes?
From this, but from the educational, the district-wide, there were a couple of changes that were recommended by the district-wide facility lead of science.
And what were they?
We adjusted the language around technology in the classroom or in the laboratories. We also adjusted the size to of the middle school labs to be more in alignment with what we did at other schools around the district.
And was that making them larger or smaller?
It was smaller, but only by 100 square feet.
And who did you talk to at the site?
Both of the site principals.
And was there anybody else who is involved in that?
Not at this time, although this is a very early document to move a project forward. It's really the baseline of what the components of the building are. We do have plans of having additional. We're actually planning on having a a site design review group meet next week or the week after to start reviewing some of the conceptual diagrams of how this can be implemented. And we will have focus groups with all the science teachers. There will be different opportunities for input. This is really just setting the stage of how many rooms are in the facility, what are they related to, and some of our general guidelines around signage and lighting and toilet accessories.
Okay. And then for the types of people or the types of specialties that you put in or that come to these site design review groups, what types of, you know, just talent or?
So we're asking each to have, because once you get a group too big, it's hard to get to decision points. So for the main design review group, we're asking for the site administrator, one parent, one science teacher, and one student. So then we would have eight total, which is about as big as you can get that particular group. But in addition to that, we have talked to the sites about having a dedicated student focus group or some level of student input that's still working on that, as well as we will have in-depth focus groups with the science teachers when we start talking about how the cabinetry is laid out, how the shelving, the depth of the shelving, those kind of intricacies. We would want the site staff that are the actual science teachers to contribute to that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Area one.
So explain to me how this project got put on this agenda for tonight when we haven't done or agreed upon a prioritization list?
So this was the Critical Needs Project that was established for Hercules High School. So in the original 2016 master plan, there were the two big rebuild projects, but then each of the priority school sites also was identified for a special Critical Needs Project that was specific for that school site. And for the Hercules Middle High Schools, that Critical Needs Project was to build the science facility in knowing that the current science facilities were so inadequate.
So you put Hercules on this list because it is a critical need, right? It was a critical need from the 2016, and you put Hercules on the list because the current facilities are not adequate to fit the student body? Is that, or is that correct?
That's correct. And this is funded out of Measure D and E, so this has nothing to do with Measure R.
But are there any other sites in 2016 from that same list? How did Hercules float to the top? I think that's my question. Like, how did, what did you use to float Hercules to the top? What matrix was used?
So in the facility, in the 2016 Facility Master Plan, there was a a implementation plan that showed different phases for how the Critical Needs Projects would be completed. And so in that, in that master plan, it showed that we were doing certain Critical Needs Projects at certain times. And this is actually the last group of Critical Needs Projects that we're working on right now. So that was all part of that implementation process that was established back in 2016.
So you said there's a group that you're working on right now. What are the ones inside that group? I know Hercules is one. What are the other ones inside that group?
Shannon, Collins, Cameron, and then we also have Stige and Kennedy.
Okay. How did you come to Hercules being worked on first, instead of Collins? Why is it here tonight first, instead of Collins or Kennedy or Shannon? Or why is it on our agenda tonight before the other schools that are still in that same bubble? How did we get to that? How did we get to this being on the agenda tonight and not the other schools that you just listed inside that group?
So the other schools were part of the Implementation Annual Report. However, they are smaller projects. And so there's not a need for a site-specific educational master or educational specification. Shannon is the only one that has an equal amount of an architectural build. And so that one was actually approved way back in November. So we didn't need to come back to that one because it's already been approved. I think it was November, maybe October, though. One of those two months. So we had this, the Shannon one was approved back then. Collins and Cameron are HVAC systems. And so those Critical Needs don't require an ed spec because we're not actually building rooms.
So those would come to the board, correct? Okay, so the HAV back, the ones that you just said? Okay, those would not come to the board. So that leaves us with, and one was approved in November or October, so that wouldn't come to the board. So that leaves us with Hercules, Kennedy, and who?
And Stige. And Kennedy and Stige are primarily a demolition project. So again, we're not really building pieces, but that was also the reason for the prioritization list to want to come forward as quickly as possible because the approach to those projects might need to be adjusted depending on how long the students will be in the temporary facilities. And so really understanding how to scope that project requires us to to know when the rebuild would happen. And since we were so close to getting there, that's what we're doing. We might, we might have an ed spec for Kennedy because we have to re-establish an office. But for Stige, there would not be a need for a an educational specification, because again, it's dictating the type of spaces that you're building and the quantities of those spaces and the sizes of those spaces. So unless you're building spaces, it's not really appropriate.
So the reason why Kennedy and Stige are not in front of us right now is because you're not building something without having to tear something down. Is that accurate? Is that what I heard you say? Or am I off?
The scope of the 2016 master plan, so if I could just step back for a second, there was $181 million left in the program at that point in time. And that's when the master plan was decided to do the master plan because there were many projects that were already in the queue. As Trustee Christian had stated earlier, there were too many projects and not enough dollars to go around. So the 2016 master plan was a way to pull back, assess what needed to be built, and then through the prioritization committee, push those dollars out to those projects. And so at the time, the board made the decision that they would do two project rebuilds, and that was the Michelle Obama Campus and the Lake Campus. And this is out of the 21 priority schools that was in the original master plan, which today, since those two schools are being rebuilt, reduces to 19. Those remaining schools that were not being rebuilt, the board decided to spread the dollars into those 19 other schools and do what was called the Critical Needs Improvements. And so those projects were identified, or the scopes were identified for each one of those schools. And so over the last four years, we have been doing what we've been calling the Critical Needs Projects and the rebuilds utilizing those funds. So that's kind of how this priority was generated, and that's how Hercules was on the list. Does that kind of explain that for you?
You're getting there. You're getting there with the explanation for me. Here's, and this is the question. Will Hercules take away time, money, energy, or resources from Kennedy or any other school on that list?
At this point in time, no, because the dollars for Hercules are already allocated and budgeted from Measures D and E from the previous bond. What we're talking about in the new prioritization are Measure R dollars, the $575 million approved. the 575 million approved by the voters. And so they're converging into one, but we have dollars and budgets and projects that are already been assigned. And I think you'll see that in the next presentation on how our budgets are already assigned to those projects and our fund balance. So the answer is no, they would not take away from those projects.
Is there any school inside that bubble that I was just told about that needs to go in front of Hercules or is it Hercules turn?
Every project.
What you said, based on what you just told me?
So every project that was identified in those 21 schools, we have budgeted either completed the work or in the process of completing. And the two ones that stand out are the Kennedy and the Stige project because those were projects that took care of a seismic need. So the example was for Kennedy. The project was to take care of the classroom buildings where they call the 100, 200, but the main academic buildings. Because of their size of the conditions, the master plan at the time, critical needs only had enough dollars to demolish those buildings and take away the safety concern and relocate those students into what is currently being used by Caliber, which are the portals behind Kennedy. And that's why it was critical when major R came along and the decision point will come if Kennedy floats to the top of the list and is a rebuild, it will direct how we structure that relocation into temporary or interim housing. And that was the same for Stige because Stige was a demolition of the main school and moved them into portable buildings. But if Stige were to float up on the list, then we would look at that probably a little bit differently on how we might utilize even the Kennedy campus or the Caliber site as an interim campus in order to facilitate the rebuild of that particular school.
So so Mr. Freeze, you're telling me that, are you telling me that the reason Kennedy and Stige are not here tonight is because there's deeper issues like where do you place the kids? If you tear something down, where do you put the, is that, is that what I'm trying to say?
They're they're not here tonight because the board has already approved those projects at in their content as the as the critical needs project, which was really a seismic project for Kennedy, and that was to tear down the existing building and move them into into temporary housing. So that project has already been board approved. There was no reason to bring that back. And the budgets have been approved for that.
So Kennedy has already Kennedy Kennedy High School has already been approved by the board?
It's approved, and I believe its budget is looking on this list here.
Yes, that happened back in the fall. We Kennedy.
So that's back before before we got on before this current board was here, correct? Okay, so Miss Hooper, what you're asking for now is the approval for Hercules. Kennedy already has its approval. Stige already has its approval, correct?
Yep.
And so you're just asking for the approval of Hercules?
And we technically already have the budget for Hercules, but it's required by the state for us to have an educate, a project-specific educational specification for projects that go through state review, which are ones that have major architectural changes. So that's why we
That's why this is being brought forward?
Right.
Okay. All right.
And it's also, it's a tool that we communicate to our architects. And I mean, we would do it no matter what to communicate to our architects. But as far as it getting board approved, that's a requirement of the state. And so that's why we are here is because the state says that we need to get our programming document board approved.
So this is just the next step in that process?
Yes.
And one piece of clarification, the Kennedy teardown has been approved and there's funding for that, but not the rebuild. That's the measure R portion of the project. And so if you tear it down, you have nothing being built back in. So that's why it hasn't been torn down yet. That part is approved and waiting for Caliber to exit so you have a place for the students to go. And you have measure R and it's approved to do the building. So everything's sequenced. That's why Hercules goes now because you have a place for those students.
Board, we have four items to go.
That was all I needed to say, President Phillips, so I'm finished with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Christian?
Yeah, the question I have is, you know, with the money that's going towards like Hercules, is there? I mean, how much money do we know what we have to finish Hercules and finish the rest of the? What are the schools that could come out of that?
So if you're referring to major D and E, so basically in the next presentation, we will show you what the balance of the D and E bonds are. So to answer your question, there there is a pot of money that has not been allocated to any particular project within D and E and budgets have already been allocated for all projects on the critical needs list.
But there's approximately $165 million that we have in the D and E slash state reimbursement fund right now. And so these these projects that we're talking about that are the critical needs projects, those as well as Lake Rebuild have been budgeted out and allocated to to the site except for a chunk of about 14 million.
Okay.
That's it for now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. Do you have any clarifying questions?
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any questions either. We are going to go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, two, two hands. Please begin public comment, Dr. Walters, two folks.
Okay, our first public speaker is Kim Sargentini. You may unmute.
Yes, thank you. I am in support of this project. I've been on the SSC at both of these schools for many years. I think our schools were built in 2001. To my knowledge, we're the only set of schools in the district that share a campus. And initially, we only got one principal for grades six through 12, and we have heard for years and years and years that things are coming. I don't even care at this point if it's science or what it is. I hope it can hold enough kids when we go to back to school night. The parents can barely fit in the rooms in the current science rooms. We have to crowd. I noticed some tables are too high, so if a parent uses a wheelchair, there's really no table they could sit at, so I always wonder about children that use wheelchairs. But every time I go to open house back to school, it seems like half the campuses are portable. So I think anything that helps to start towards completion of this campus, when we take our students to other schools and they see El Cerrito, they see Deansa, they see Penole, they look and go, why can't our theater hold a play? Why can't, you know, they have all the why, why, why questions? So I feel like this kind of comes a little bit closer to bringing us up to the modern age where we want kids to focus on STEM and we want them to have an actual classroom instead of, say, a portable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is C. Peters. You may unmute.
Hello, my name is Carol Peters. I am a current Hercules middle school teacher and also a area one voter. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Smith Folds, trustee Smith Folds, for your questions. I had a whole written comment that I no longer need to say because of all the very detailed questions you asked, so I appreciate that. I just want to say, Mr. Phillips, keep a stop cutting her off. As a WCC USC employee who went through the race and equity training that was provided for all staff this year, you're giving prime examples of silencing and we use that in our training on campus. So I appreciate you providing examples, but you keep doing it and it's a problem. So thank you, though. Keep on working. Good day.
Our last public speaker is Maisha Harris Gash. You may unmute.
Good evening again. I just want to say, so I believe I heard that money has been allocated for Kennedy for some phase of tearing down, but then I think I heard someone say, but then where do you go? Where the kids go when you tear it down? I'm like, it makes me think. Charter schools take our tennis courts. They take our fields like baseball, softball, like all this land at Kennedy is taken by others. Once again, it goes back to your values. How do you show young people that you value them? How do you show my kids that you value them? Now we gotta wait. So yeah, there's the money over there, but y'all gotta wait because we gotta take care of charter schools first. My students, they go many places in our district and they see the charter schools. What are your values? Where are you putting your money? These are your students. Some of them go K through 12 or they enter in middle school or whatever. But when my students walk around, when I walk around our campus, it once again is like, gotta wait your turn, gotta wait your turn. The Kennedy community has been waiting over 10 years for this district to show, not with your words, but with your values and part, that means the money and what you give to them. Y'all gotta do better because the kids of the Kennedy community, they deserve better. You owe them and it's time for y'all to get right. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wolf. May I please have a motion to approve this item?
I'll move it.
A second.
It's been moved by Reckler and seconded by Gonzalez, boy. Board, we only got about 40 minutes to do a lot. Is there any discussion? Okay. Mrs. Smith Folds.
I just want to make it very clear that what Mr. Miss, sorry, Ms. Hooper and Mr. Freeze are telling me is that when I vote for this, I am not taking away from Kennedy or Stige. I'm not taking away from anyone. Is that correct? I just need to be very clear about that. Because I will not be a part of anything that multiplies the disparities that are in our district. So you're telling me that this vote doesn't take anything away from those students at Kennedy or those students at Stige? Is that I need an audible like, is that correct? Because I have to be able to sit. I have to be able to sit with this decision.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze. Okay, so it's not taking away. Okay, I I'm not going to do that. I'm not Herc- that's not what Hercules is about. Herc, and this is part of my comment, Hercules is not about taking away from any children at all. We are always adding to the equity value here. That's what Hercules, that's our core value is that we add, we're inclusive and we're transparent. So because you're telling me, Mr. Freeze, that we will not be taken away giving science to the science building to the students at Hercules Middle School and Hercules High School, I'm taking you at your word. But I do not want anybody to come back and say, because we did this at Hercules, now we don't have the money for Kennedy. That's unacceptable. I don't want anybody to come back and say, now that we did this at Hercules, we don't have time for Kennedy. That's unacceptable. Am I being as clear as I possibly can with that? It's unacceptable to me. And I'm taking you both as your word that that won't come out of your mouth and it won't put a delay on these kids. That's my comment, Mr. Phillips.
Okay. Board members, are there any other board members who have comments on this item? Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I I just, you know, just want to add, you know, you know, to this is we just want to make sure that we do right and stop playing around and stop playing games. Because that has been done throughout the years. I'm from this area. I grew up, born and raised here in this area. All of my family come through this area, so I know the truth. And we're gonna have to stop playing around. And and make sure that everybody get the what's due to their schools and making sure stuff is done right. Because because or else we lying. And 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 I read somewhere, you should know them by their fruits that they bear. And you can't put new wine in the old wine skins. So we holding you accountable tonight. That's it.
Mrs. Reckler, can you start the vote?
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes, with that accountability eye watching.
Christian, yes.
And so, so yes.
Yes, thank you very much. That vote carries as well. Now we're going to go to our consent items.
We have
Oh, Lord, Jesus, I'm sorry. I'm trying to. Okay, you're right. We have just checking stuff off my list. Okay. So we do have one more. I'm sorry. Preliminary authorization to youth project savings and the fund balance is part of the critical needs project implementation. That's a C4.
Yes, and I'll try to move through this quickly. So if you could bring up the presentation. So tonight, what we want to talk about, so you've heard about the 2016 master plan update. You've heard about the Hercules project, the Collins project, the Cameron project and the Shannon project. Who are your next slide? As we're working through these these projects, this is what we wanted to point out tonight is just where we are in the process of those particular projects. So as you've heard earlier tonight, scope validation is is the very first thing we do. We try to understand what the original intent was. We look at the scope. We look at the programming, much as what you're looking at Hercules tonight as far as education specification. And then we go through a schematic design phase. And during schematic design phase, we really begin to bring the the building to life, right? We try to understand what the specification is telling us and what the scope intent is. And this timeline kind of shows you the expenses, how we spend dollars on projects. And so in the beginning, you know, we start with a zero balance, right? And as we move through design process, we're spending money on our architect and our planning and engineering. And then we find out as we get into construction documents and then DSA. Then we're the where the real dollars kick in is after we bid the project and we get into construction and eventually close out. And the reason we're here tonight is we are in schematic design. Part of schematic design is to identify the project budgets and validate the budgets that originally approved for the projects to make sure they are either robust enough to build the project or if there's scope that has to be adjusted in order to either fit the budget or the project would have to be scrapped because there wouldn't be funding for that. Next slide, please. What we're experiencing over time, especially with COVID, when the original master plan was put together and conceived in 2016, there was a 5% escalation applied to the projects through the midpoint of construction. What we're seeing is impact on the supply chain. And if anybody has been to the hardware store lately, you'll notice lumber still gasoline all are at a premium today. And this ripples right into our particular construction. And so what we're seeing is that our project budgets are not robust enough to meet the needs or the scope of these particular projects. Next slide, please. And so we're at a decision point tonight. What we're looking for is next slide. So we're at a decision point tonight in these particular projects. I think we went over the particular slide. Can you go back one? So for Collins and Cameron, these are very simple projects. These are electrical upgrades, as you heard earlier, and HVAC upgrades for ventilation. There's not a lot of scope to change in these projects. The only way you can either reduce scope or limit the project or add budget to it to construct them. So how would you pick the classrooms that you want to do air conditioning in? So it doesn't make logical sense. So it's either you move the project forward or or you scrap it. For Shannon, this is a new multipurpose room and kitchen. There are ways where you can try to save money, but what do you eliminate? Do you eliminate square footage? Do you take out a kitchen? Do you take out the stage out of the project? And this is about equity. And so it's really Shannon project wants to go for his multipurpose room as originally conceived and approved by the board. And for Hercules, it's eight labs. And again, we were just on this conversation about equity and the budget for Hercules is not robust enough in today's numbers to support it. And so it's either the project gets reduced and then our labs gets cut back or the project would get scrapped. Next slide. And so we wanted to share tonight was what our master plan fund balances. So we have 165 million dollars left. And those dollars have been allocated out to the critical needs projects. And every one of the projects has its budget allocated. And so if you look at the pie chart, you can begin to see how that 165 has been allocated to every one of the projects that are currently on the list. What we do have is this piece of the pie, which is the 14.5 million dollars. And this is the fund balance, the remaining dollars from measure D and E and the state dollars that have been coming back from modernization CTE funds. This is dollars that had not been allocated out to any particular project. In the past, we have went to this In the past, we have went to this particular fund balance to fund other projects such as Richmond High to increase the scope. We've used it for Michelle Obama to increase the fund project scope in order to meet the dollars. So while these projects are very early in design, we wanted to bring them forward and acknowledge the fact that we do have a shortfall. We can use the dollars that are in the unfunded balance to make up that shortfall. What we're asking tonight is really is just approval to continue through the schematic design into design development. At the completion of design development, we'll come back to the board when we have a better understanding of the total project budget. And that's based upon as we move through the design development page, we have a better understanding of how of the scope and how we estimate the project. Because right now those numbers are are very ambiguous. They're square foot numbers or estimates. But we, as we move down the timeline, we better define what the project scope is, which gives us a better read on what the budget is for those particular projects. And again, this has no impact on major R funds. So staff is staff is recommending that the board gives approval tonight to move, continue on with the design development for Hercules, Collins, Cameron and Shannon and come back to the board at the completion of design design development and approve the budgets at that point. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Trust you, Reckler, do you have any questions?
Would you be open to just a question and a and a comment to all the world to one because we're short on time?
Just we'll we'll go through the process like normal. So if you have a question, just ask.
Okay, I'll just save it then for now.
Okay.
So, Mr. Freeze, what you're asking for tonight is to go and try to flush out a budget and then come back and say, this is what we can do with the money that we have. Is that is that accurate?
Actually, what we're asking for tonight is we know that the budget is short for these particular projects. So there's not enough money to build what the scope of the what the intent of the scope is for these particular schools. So what we're asking tonight is that the board acknowledge the fact that we are short dollars, but allow us to move through the design development phase when we can better understand and come back with a more precise budget and then come back with the authorization to increase the project budget to meet the estimate for the project.
So what you're saying is the project that we just voted on at Hercules, we don't have enough money to do it the way we just voted on for it to be done. So you're going to go out and then see how you can complete the project and you may have to come back to the board to ask for more money to complete it exactly the way you said it. Or you may have to come back to the board and say, hey, I need to take it down from eight rooms to four rooms.
Exactly. We will come back with either the increasing budget or a scope adjustment in order to either align with existing budget or increase the budget to meet the design criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze.
Mr. Christian.
You pass. You pass me up.
So so would you have an idea more or less or how short we are? You can't obviously give me a an actual number because of exactly what you just said, they need to go through the sign. But any thought from staff on what they think that we are short on?
They missed me here, I think has a better handle on it, but I believe we're somewhere in the four to five million dollar range. It's actually.
I think it's higher than that. However, it would be within the fourteen million that is unassigned.
Which is why that's on a sign and you're asking that we keep it on a sign in case we need to fill the gap with that money.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions. We are going to go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, discussion board. Is there a motion for this?
You need most before to this president Phillips?
We should. We don't always do it, but we should. But is there a motion?
I mean, I want to I want to move it with a with a with a caveat that there's a comprehensive plan that's brought back.
I mean, you can make whatever motion you want.
Okay, so that's the motion. I didn't get to make my comment, but you know, I'd like to move it as long as there's comprehensive plan that's brought back.
I would second that, President Phillips.
Okay, moved by Reckler, seconded by Gonzalez Hoyer, that the item is approved with a comprehensive plan coming back. Trusty Reckler, do you have a timeline that you wanted to put in that motion?
No, I mean, I'm open on it. I mean, the comment is that it's true. Costs are raising. It's been in the paper, been reading about it. I mean, it's not, this is not not imagined. I think I did hear somewhere that they are expected to come down in eighteen months on materials. I don't know if I made that up or I got it somewhere or I I don't know if that's really, really but but it is a reality for right now. And it seems that the longer we go on, the higher costs go up. So like today is the day, you know, and you don't want to stall too much. But I would like to see the facilities team squeeze and relook at it and rescrub and see what they can do. And we do have that cushion in there and, you know, thank God and that's what's there for. And that's what good management is, you know, good money management is for. But I do want to see it written down and done well. And what's really, really important to me is that we don't start sucking into measure R. So that's the big thing. The other question that I have is what did you learn from it? Is five percent contingency the right number going forward? You know, so there is some discussion going forward after that. But what they're talking about is not, it's not fake. So that's that's my comment.
So, Mr. Freeze, we just had a conversation and I just voted on a project that may not be built because we may not have the money to complete it. So what the option is, I just voted on a project that would either get downsized or scrapped completely. That's the conversation we just had. Oh, so here's my comment. Why wouldn't that say first? Why wouldn't it say that, hey, here's a project, may not have the money to build it. If we do build it, it's not gonna be what you look like, like you thought it was. And then take a vote. That's confusing. I I am, I I just wish to heavens that we would be able to say things plainly and in some type of logical order. No shade to y'all. This is no shade to y'all. I'm just trying to tell you, as someone who is listening and trying to make a very knowledgeable decision, it would have been a whole different conversation if you would have said, hey, here's the project, may not have enough money for it, may have to make it look differently. But there's this cushion over here that I may have something to do with it, but I'm not going to be able to say, I'm not going to take away from any other kid. My comment is based out of stress. This is stressful because it impacts children at every single point. And if I just spent conversation and time and resources having a conversation about something that now has the potential not to even come to fruition, the way that I voted on it for because you did a whole little pretty project. Like it had a whole little schematic thing and it was eight rooms and you're gonna have like sinks and all of that stuff. But that may not be accurate. How are we being transparent, accountable and honest to the people who are watching this when we are just back and forth? Now, listen, I know lumber can cost a lot. Got it. Lumber can cost a lot, but so can telling people one thing and doing something completely else. That costs trust. That costs people's real commitment to this process. That's why, Mr. Phillips, when you said trust the process, no. No, because the process going back and forth like a ping pong ball. I don't understand it. I I really need this to get into some order. Dr. Hurst, my friend, look at my face. I need this to get into some order. This is a that we not we not doing it right. We will have to come, we have to do better. To quote Ms. Gash, we will have to do better. So, Mr. Freeze and Ms. Hooper, I appreciate you. This is not coming directly to you, but I I do want you to feel it. But this is not coming directly to you. But I need I you're the expert. You're telling me. So I need to have all the information in an orderly fashion so I can make a decision for not just the community that elected me for the entire school district. It has to be some order. It really, really does. This is out of order. And it's just making me stressed out. And I'm I'm a little tired of being stressed out.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Christian, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, President Phillips. And I'm just saying this, you know, we got to be honest with ourselves and and be truthful of how stuff, look, if I'm not being honest and truthful, you know, how can you win trust of people? How can you begin to win people over when we say one thing here and we come back with something else, but our words are not lining up. And when we don't line up what we say, then what we're doing is something totally the opposite. We're not being truthful of how this is going to be done. And if the cost is 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 up there, you know, we look, if you be truthful and honest to people, then people will have a better understanding of things. That's why things are so messed up. That's what I keep saying. You cannot put new wine in old wine skins. It won't work. It won't work. Why? Because it's contaminated. And when stuff is contaminated, it will burst. And so what I'm saying is, is that we dance too much. We dancing with the wolves. And when we dance with the wolves, what we doing is we 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 got one foot on one side and a foot on this side and a foot on that side. But what we trying to do is see how we could play the people and how we could play the game. That's what we're doing. But you know, the truth, I read somewhere and said, you should know the truth and the truth shall set you free. And when we do right, we can do the right things and do what we supposed to do. You know, it this bothers, it bothers me because I've seen so much happen over the years. We got to get this house in order. When the house is not in order, things are just not right. So you know where I stand. I stand for what's right. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. I I don't have any comments. I think everything I've been thinking is already been checked.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of comments. So this item that we're talking about now did come to the facilities committee. It was discussed there. Our staff was very open and and clear about what it is that they were trying to do and why. It came to the full board in part because I had concerns about it as well. And so they are here, in my opinion, to actually try to be transparent about how they move forward. And even if it was not articulated the best way that it could have been, I do believe that they are trying to be transparent about what they want to do. For me, I will not be voting, you know, in favor of this item. And I talked about this at the facilities meeting. I do see this as an increase. Staff has heard this before, but I do see this as an increase in funding for those projects. And until I see for myself, and this goes back to the throwing of the cake with Mr. Gonzalez Hoyer, until I see for myself how that final list comes out, I don't feel comfortable allocating additional funds to these projects. Because everybody does have monies that were allocated to them through D and E. And in the cases of Stige, for example, you know, in Kennedy, we're talking about tearing down our building, buildings, but not actually giving them anything new out of the D and E. And so I think even in D and E, not just R, that those schools should have been prioritized. That's where I am on this, but it it came to all of you for you to make a decision. But I do appreciate staff for bringing this forward and not doing what has happened in the past or what some of us feel have happened in the past, which is not feel, but it did happen. Of monies and whatnot being switched around and and folks not really understanding how that was happening. So they brought it forward. So so things are different. But that said, we do need a vote. Trust you, Reckler, can you begin the vote?
So sorry, can I just clarify the motion and that I seconded? If that's okay to ask trustee.
The overstate, there was a lot of discussion to just restate it. So the motion is that the item is approved with a plan to come back for spending. Trusty Reckler, is that correct?
Yeah, a plan needs to come back for the spending.
So in our prior to. So sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the trustee Reckler.
Yeah, no, that's fine. A plan needs to come back for with the spending prior to funds being allocated.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I just needed that clarification. Thank you, President Phillips.
Okay.
Because then that gives us the opportunity to say, okay, you know, they need six million more. This is where it's going to go, but this is where they're gonna cut. They can shave here. They scrub this, you know, like whatever the way it is. But it it allows us to to take a look at where that's gonna go.
Okay, trustee Reckler, can you start the vote?
Reckler, yes.
You're you're trying to ask for a cushion of money. I'm gonna I'm gonna hold you to what you said. So no, do it with the budget that you said you was gonna do it with. Make it happen, Captain. This is accountability and already voted for it that for the building to be put in there and for this to happen, do it with the budget that you said you're gonna be able to do it with. Smith Folds, no.
Christian, no.
I'm gonna abstain.
Phillips, no. Motion fails. So now we're going to go on to the consent items that were pulled. We have three, two resolutions and the appointment of Jason Lindsay just because of the the hour, and I hope that this will be short. And he's been waiting for six months about. I would like to take up Mr. Lindsay. Mrs. Reckler, you pulled this item?
I did. It was just a question. It's it's my understanding now of constituents that have applications still outstanding. I'm just wondering, you know, what's what's up with the, I think there are other people that have applied and I'm just curious as to what's going on applying to the CBOC.
Is it is your question to somebody in specific? Is it to Mr. Freeze or to me or?
I'm not sure whoever reviews applications for this.
So the way the process works is staff actually gets the applications. And then once staff gets the applications, then they bring the applications for to the facilities committee and then the facilities committee will make a recommendation and bring it to you guys. I mean, so that's generally the way the process works and that's how Mr. Lindsay is here on this evening. But I don't know, Mr. Wald or Mr. Freeze, do you? Or is there a particular person that you're calling asking about or?
No, I think there are several people that have been outstanding for many months. So I'm just curious as to what we're doing. Have we modified them? What's I mean, are we providing any customer service about we've got it? Did we lose it? Is there something, do we think we have it and we don't or, you know, just trying to figure out?
Some of it is connected to the item that was pulled, finalizing the configuration of the CBOC and the number of seats there as they're statutorily required identified seats. there as there are statutorily required identified seats and there's at large. So there are some in the queue that need to be brought to the facilities committee. At the same time, there's also the potential revision that's been going for more than a year and a half on the CBOC board policy that we were just trying to work all them together. At least one of the applicants that's in the queue is one that would be impacted by how we move forward with the CBOC policy and their eligibility. So clarifying that is helpful to be able to clarify the application. So it's not an oversight. It's not meant to slight anybody. It's really just getting each step in the right direction there to move forward.
Okay. And my final question is, is have we communicated with these people at all or did, or do they think their applications are just in the black hole?
Can I just clarify? Because we're talking like there's this big ambiguous number of people who are just waiting to get on the CBOC. So who?
I believe it's three as far as I know.
Okay, so.
Maybe four.
There's one application that is outstanding. We have two applications from members that have served their three years or the three consecutive terms.
Okay, so like, I, cause I, so just, and that's the reason that I wanted to say this, because we're talking in generalities, like there's all of these people. Um, and what Mr. Freeze just said was that there is like one new person. And then there's two people who termed out that I heard. So one would be, I think, Don Gosney and one would be Anton Younger. Both of those people actually just termed out. So it would be like me terming out of office if there were term limits and then going to sign back up at the clerk's office. So, but there's not this big number of people. The person that's been waiting very patiently, um, is actually Mr. Lindsay, um, and who's been waiting, I think, since November. Um, but, and I know that Consuela Laura was on there. Um, she withdrew her application. Uh, so I think the other person that would be waiting, if somebody was waiting, would be Mr. Lindsay and I think Tom Panis.
Tom Panis is the one waiting, yes.
That's it.
Yeah, so there's those three. And then there's another member, I believe, that's currently on the CBOC that turned in application to switch seats representations, if I remember correct.
Right, but that position was actually filled.
Yeah.
That particular seat.
I mean, if you're talking about Guadalupe Angana. So, because that's the other thing, there are people who are on the CBOC like, or who were on it, for example, or on it, either one. And they submit applications to switch seats. So you may have somebody who was literally sitting on it, like Guadalupe Angana is a great example. That person submits an application to just switch seats, but they already actually have a seat. And so spending time when there are, and there's a bunch of things to do like what we're doing tonight, so spending time focusing on somebody who literally already has a seat versus doing other work. So that's an issue as well, but there's not like this, this, this pipeline of, of new people who are trying to get on the CBOC who are not being attended to.
I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Um, so this wasn't really an issue for me, but now I have a question. Um, so, so putting the people who have termed out aside, uh, there are other names that are, and, and the waiting list to be approved who are not termed out, that are not coming forward. Could you clarify that, uh, President Phillips?
So the, so the people that I have heard about, um, not that they like come to the facilities meeting or whatever, but the people that I heard about, Consuela Laura was one, and then she removed, she withdrew her application. I'm just gonna speak in, on, about all of them, because it's easier, because I'm trying to run through in my mind. So Consuela was one. Don Gosney was one who turned out and just submitted an application after turning out. Anton Younger was one who turned out and submitted an application after turning out. Jason Lindsay has been waiting and that's the person that we have on this evening. Guadalupe Angana, who was on it, submitted an application to switch seats. The seat that she went into, I mean, the seat that she was trying to move into is the seat that Joseph Camacho got, which we approved Joseph Camacho maybe like a month or two ago. And to my knowledge, the only other person is Tom Panis. So that's everybody that I can remember hearing their name come up at a different time. So I don't know if that is helpful to you. But I can't think of any other names that I.
That, that is helpful. Um, so it's really, it really sounds like it's just, it's just, uh, one more that is kind of in the, in the waiting list.
Tom Panis.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
There is two hands raised. President Phillips, three hands raised, two hands raised. Keeps going back and forth.
Sorry. Um, okay. So if there are no more questions for the board, let's go to a public comment and call those three, if three hands up.
Okay, so the first hand that was raised is Don Gosney.
I would have really appreciated if trustee Reckler would pay attention to this. This is twice in one night, I'm gonna say something nice about people. Mr. Lindsay is an outstanding candidate for the, the CBOC. He applied. He is, uh, back in November. He has attended every CBOC meeting since then, even though he's not a member. He has provided all kinds of great commentary. He comes prepared. He pays attention. He asks good relevant questions. Put him on there. Get it done. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Anton Younger.
This is Anton Young here. I was appointed in April of 2000 by a board resolution as a member of the new measure R CBOC for a two-year term. I think it's incorrect to say that I was termed out. Thank you.
The final public comment is Lorraine Hughes. And Lorraine put her hand down, so I'm going to assume, wait, her hands back up. So Lorraine, if you can unmute.
Sorry, working the system is a little foreign to me. Um, I would like to wholeheartedly support Mr. Lindsay. I'm so glad that he has hung in there this long and still is interested. I would also like to make the comment that the, um, one person still in the queue that is new, Mr. Panis, uh, Mr. Um, Gosney just left and he was our senior representative. That's one of the statutory positions. I, I asked, uh, Tom Panis and he does belong to a senior organization. He didn't put it on his application, but he does. Tom Panis has been on the CBOC, has been the president of the CBOC. He's been on the school board. He's been a president of the school board. Uh, what any organization needs is historical history. We lost Mr. Anton, we lost, uh, Mr. Don. And Panis can give that to us. You know yourself, you're four new people. And you may not know the history. We need somebody on that committee that knows the history. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that is public comment.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Lindsay?
Oh, proven.
Okay, moved by Reckler. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Smith Folds for any discussion?
I'd just like to, uh, see if we can uh, have a more timely customer service oriented process. Um, through reviewing patients. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll make one quick comment. Mr. Lindsay, thank you very much for hanging in there. I know you've been waiting for a very long time and that you've been participating um, with the CBOC. Um, and unfortunately it took this long, but we are very thankful. I'm very, the vote hasn't happened, I should say, we are very thankful that you, uh, have stuck around and that you have been, uh, contributing. Um, Mrs. Reckler, can you start the vote, please?
Yes, of course. Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Gonzalez, yes. The motion carries unanimously. Um, congratulations, Mr. Lindsay. Again, thank you for being patient with it. So, we're gonna do, uh, item D1, which is resolution number 782021, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed seventy-five million dollars aggregate principal amount, so on and so on and so on. Presentation, please.
So, tonight we've heard quite a bit about needing to have a plan, about really being transparent and really understanding what our focus is, how we're gonna get everything financed. And so this is part of the next steps. Tonight, we voted to bring back as quickly as possible a prioritized list of projects. Once that list gets brought back to the board, the board is going to then make their recommendation for what school is first. The second you make that recommendation, it can take anywhere from twelve to twenty-four to thirty-six months before that first shovel goes in the ground. There's a lot of pent-up demand and need and we just spent a lot of time talking about project overrides. Um, we're really looking at, from the financial side, being prepared and having the resources and having the budget in place to make sure that every single decision that this board makes can be executed in the right timing. And so part of it is looking at when do we issue our first issuance of measure R, knowing that there are laws requiring when you issue funds, you have to have a plan to spend those funds within a certain time period. And you also have to make sure that you follow assessed value. We did a much longer presentation to the facilities and, um, budget committees. I'm gonna try to do this in, um, four or five minutes. We do have, if there are very technical questions, our financial advisor is available to talk about it. But this is the real simple thing. Understanding the market and how things are going matters. The board approved at the last meeting a refinancing, gonna use the word correct for trustee Reckler, of previous issued to, um, bonds. We went to pre-market this morning. We told the board, we're gonna save taxpayer seventeen million and thirteen percent. I can say right now, it looks like that savings is over twenty million and almost seventeen and a half, eighteen percent. We hit the market very well. We were fully subscribed. What that means is that, um, JP Morgan Chase and Raymond James were able to find enough bidders to purchase the bonds that we have more demand than supply, because our rating came out well. We were able to compete and beat or be equal to higher rated school districts such as Huntington Beach, California. We were able to compare with that. We had cities actually buy our bonds in this round. So the city of, I think, um, Oxnard or a couple other cities were buying bonds. So we're now looking at our next issuance. This is a very important chart. Assessed value determines how quickly you can issue bonds. When you sell five hundred and seventy-five million in bonds as authorization, we cannot go and sell all of those the first day. It's how quickly assessed value goes up to determine when you can access more funds. And as we do that, you can see that our assessed value has gone up pretty consistently. The one year it had a big drop, those two years were when Chevron was reassessed and the market had a significant course correction. But assessed value, you can see is going up pretty significantly. At our rate, a normal issuance, we could probably issue a hundred and twenty-five million. If we did that now on a normal thirty-year issuance, you would issue a hundred and twenty-five and taxpayers would get a repayment amount of just under two to one, meaning that taxpayers would pay back two hundred and fifty million dollars over thirty years. What we're proposing for our first issuance of measure R is a much different model. What we're proposing is that we front-load the coupons. And with our normal approved tax rate of sixty dollars, and that'll be the second item, we would be able to do an issuance now of seventy-five million and pay back half of that in the first two years, bringing our debt service down so significantly that we would be able to, right when it's time to begin construction on one or two projects simultaneously, because of the demands that the board wants, instead of having to do one, wait, do another, wait. And this is a very important component here, because we're about to face, talking to the market as we're looking at bond timing, the inflationary pressures of the market are becoming very significant. If you went out and bought gas in the last two weeks, you notice it's creeped well over four dollars a gallon. In the beginning of the pandemic, we were sitting down under two. If you wanted to buy a brand-new work truck for maintenance and operations, MNO for trustee Smith Folds, if we felt that we needed a new one for our plumber today, it would be delivered in August of twenty twenty-two. The supply chains are that far backed up. We're already at the district, at the county level, looking at paper becoming scarce. The price of steel has escalated more than fivefold. There is going to be cost pressures. So by doing an issuance now and expediting the prioritization matrix, authorizing Louis Freeze's team to immediately go out and begin the process of engaging an architect and getting into the design phase, we would be able to issue again right in twenty twenty-three, probably another hundred and fifty million and have over two hundred million in the bank to do projects um, in the first two and a half years. If we don't issue and we wait, then we're only gonna be able to do a singular issue on the normal process. So if you look here, in this model of doing an issuance in the next couple, in the near-term horizon, our repayment ratio will be less than one point three to one for our first issuance. So instead of the taxpayers on a seventy-five million dollar issuance paying back a hundred and forty million, they'd be paying back only ninety-seven million and it doesn't change what's already been authorized. If you remember, we've for years done a very sophisticated balancing with the county assessor as it pertains to our rates, to have consistent rates. By using the statutory sixty, we won't have issues where we cross over like we have before, where you issue too quickly and too often and will be able to take action. So what we're asking for tonight is two things. First, authorization for us to plan to issue the first seventy-five million. We know that to issue it, we need to have a prioritization plan. So our plan would be to bring back to the board on the twenty-third, if we can get it done in time, the prioritization list. If the board approves that, by having this authorization for issuing the bonds, we would already have the process started, because it takes us about sixty days to do an issuance, even though we just did one. So we want to have the authorization to be prepared. We're not gonna issue until we know we have prioritization done by the board, but then we would be able to issue, get moving so that we can do exactly what trustee Smith Folds, trustee Christian. Trustee Christian, Trustee Reckler, Trustee Gonzalez, and President Phillips. What you've asked over and over tonight is have a plan of financing, have a plan that's going to ensure that we do what we say we're gonna do. And so, tonight, we're asking for that authorization to prepare to issue the first seventy-five million. Knowing that we're gonna be utilizing a front-loaded coupon structure, which will significantly save taxpayers. Money over the term of this and allow us to then access enough funds. If indeed, we're doing one, two, or three schools that are getting expedited. We're gonna need to have significant capital available. So, I went a little long, but I hope that gave you an explanation. We can talk the market reasons and all of those. And I'll answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you very much, Board, I mean, Board, thank you very much, Dr. Wald. Board, starting with Trustee Reckler, any clarifying questions? And before we start, remember, we're trying to. Talk about the whats. I mean, it's hard to talk about what and we asking questions, but please remember, we're trying to move into the whats and. Not focus so much on the hows.
Yeah, good, cuz I don't know anything about the how, so I'm safe there. But do we have, do we have a representative from KNN?
Yes, I can bring Blake Baum off if you like. I'll promote him right now. Give me just a moment. He should come on in just a second. Blake, are you there?
Yeah, hi, good evening. This is Blake Beam with KNN.
Hi, how are you? Nice. Thank you for being here at this late hour. Just very briefly, I need for you to make a compelling case to me about how to do this, because we don't have. You know, we should be spending in accordance with the master plan. We don't have one. I don't know what seventy-five million buys us. I don't know where that number came from. You know, the debt needs to be in sync with the need, and I don't know what the need is at this moment. So, I need you to really convince me right now that, you know, we're saving versus the carrying costs.
Yeah.
I'm really nervous about this, I gotta tell you.
Yeah, I think it's, it's all good points, Trustee Reckler, and. And for a variety of reasons, I think. You know, you can consider moving forward with the initial Measure R issuance. Really with a, with a focus on a continuation of the capital facilities improvement plan. That does exist and, and go and extends beyond the existing monies that are available. From the authorizations that were approved in two thousand ten and two thousand twelve. I think we heard from Mr. Freeze this evening that those monies that are currently available from existing. Geo bond prior issuances are earmarked for existing projects, and so. Anything related to Measure R would be a continuation or a move forward on the next phase of projects. There's nothing that I'm going to say that is going to suggest a financing now is more important. Than the ultimate need that would drive the financing that voters approve. I think that what we've heard from Dr. Wald is that market conditions are favorable, and I can concur with that statement. I think that there, that what the board is hearing from staff as a whole. Is that there are projects beyond those that are currently already budgeted from the prior measures, and new dollars will be needed. And so, a focus on Measure R will be a priority and important. And the structure that we have preliminarily put together, KNN that is, in conjunction with district staff. Is focused on an issuance that would be as cost-effective and conservative. As we could possibly put together with the mindset that the initial sale is going to be. Something that kicks off Measure R projects, but the likelihood will be that as that program really takes shape. There will be additional funds needed in the not-too-distant future, and that there will be. The utmost capacity to access subsequent series of bonds for Measure R after the initial sale.
And let me just add one thing that Blake didn't say. You just heard Louis Freeze talk about the fact there's. That we have to go into that fourteen million dollar piggy bank just to do the projects that have already been approved. That means there's no money to do design or hire an architect to build a. High school that has windows. To build anything, you need money in the bank.
But you don't need seventy-five million dollars.
Right, but when you do an issuance, there's a cost of issuance amount. You don't wanna go and issue ten million dollars. And then come right back in. What you're doing is spending more for cost pieces. You have three years to spend the money. You just have to, in, you just have to encumber five percent in the first period. And that's where hiring an architect does do that. What we're trying to do is get to the fact that we know we're gonna need in the next. Thirty-six months, we're gonna need probably two hundred and fifty million. If we don't do it this way. Then we're gonna be doing what Louis just did tonight, saying you can do a little of this or a little of that, but you can't do what you really want to do. So, again, the board has asked us to create a plan that gets you what you're asking to do. That's what we're bringing forward, is a plan that gives you the ability to make decisions. Assessed value does not miraculously accelerate. In fact, when districts do that, they do, they take out things that are called. Capital appreciation bonds, which really escalate the cost, and we don't wanna go that route. We wanna use current interest bonds at the lowest possible borrowing cost. We just saved taxpayers just about twenty million today. That's on top of the refinancing we did last year. We're trying to save taxpayers another twenty-five million on the first issuance. And be poised to make decisions in the future. We understand it's a tough situation. The reality is, in the next item. We're gonna be recommending assessing at the full sixty. So, we're going to be, we have to assess now. If we do not assess this year, you will not be building anything for four to five years. So, that is part of our job, is to get prepared and do the things that are necessary. And I'm speaking very forthright, because it's important that the community understands to do the things that we're trying to do. You have to be thoughtful, you have to plan it, you have to then follow through. And so, that's what we're trying to create, is a financing program that does that. Because we cannot, we did not assess this year. We should have actually assessed in the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year. We purposely did not. So, we're a year behind since we authorized Measure R. We cannot wait. It does need to be an assessment. And if we don't do the assessment at the rate that we took to voters, we will not be doing the projects in the speed. Or the expectation that the board has expressed tonight. So, we're trying to deliver.
Why is seventy-five million?
Why is seventy-five million the choice?
Yeah, why is that the number?
Because if you look at the coupon structure that we put, we can pay back from our assessments. The first two years worth of assessment can pay back half of that principal, and then you amortize the rest over thirty years. And it brings us down to a five-dollar, less than a five-dollar per AV, which then brings fifty-five dollars per AV. To do the second issuance. So, it's actually a very creative way of doing things that KNN structured. And that they've been with us for more than a decade. So, when we talk about institutional history. And understanding what's gone well with the bond program and what's gone poorly with the bond program. KNN fully understands our needs, and so I ask them to. Be ready, saying we have pent-up demand. We're gonna need to access more on the front end than you normally would do. Normally, we'd do one fifty and then wait four years, and then do a hundred, and then wait four years and do another hundred. So, you'd be nine years out before you'd cross three hundred million. By doing this, we can actually get to that three hundred million and six and still save taxpayers money.
And so, you have to build, we have to spend everything within thirty-six months, is that correct?
You have to encumber it into a project. Eighty-five percent within thirty-six months, five percent must be. Encumbered means allocated toward an activity. Hiring an architect would cover that. So, just engaging with design for something that's approved, and we would not. Click-go on the sale until the board approves the prioritization matrix. So, if the board does not approve it at the next. When it comes to the first board meeting, we would not go to market. So, your authorization tonight is for us to be teed up. But we don't go until you approve a project, because then that starts the clock. For Louis's team to do an RFP, to then bring back an architect, once you have the priorities.
Blake, what's the downside to this? What's the worst-case scenario?
Let's start with kind of the, on the positive end of things. We did just mobilize the financing team to. Go to market with what I would consider a very successful refinancing of general obligation bonds that have, that are already existing. There are some cost efficiencies associated with piggybacking, so to speak, a Measure R issuance. On what has already been established as a twenty-twenty-one financing. That would apply for both credit ratings that we've received, which, you know, frankly, the district should be very proud. To report out that a lot of the actions taken last year in twenty-twenty during the pandemic with financing. Uncertainties on a macro level, that the rating agencies have changed. The district's outlook to stable, whereas last year, they, they viewed it as negative. And so, utilizing those ratings for both the refunding and the new money sale. There, again, there will be some cost efficiencies from a legal standpoint. Our attorneys, bond attorneys that draft all the documents. There is a lot of cost efficiencies there. And then, of course, the market. The market is, right now. Continuing to offer extremely favorable, long-term, low-interest rates in the municipal bond market. Near historically low levels. While I'm not in a position to give a specific timeframe when that might change, I think that there is an expectation. In the broader financial market. That with the inflationary pressures that we're already starting to see on a day-to-day basis. That that will eventually impact the treasury market and the municipal market. Which will cause a higher cost of borrowing. And so. Those are some of the upsides and some of the downsides that could be affected if deciding to wait versus moving forward now. I do think that the driver really is, at the board level, being in a position. To actually prioritize and select projects to move forward with, associated with Measure R. And if that is something that the board is really focused on. Then, moving forward with the initial issuance at a smaller dollar amount, smaller par amount. Than what was originally planned, would be a prudent first step into having money in the bank. Available to move forward with those first projects, and then follow it up with a second issuance. At some point in the next, you know, call it, you know, eighteen months to thirty-six months, as dollars are needed. But this would position.
The smaller is the seventy-five.
Correct. Instead, instead of what was originally designed for Measure R at one fifty for the initial sale. Seventy-five is a smaller amount that's being paid back. Nearly fifty percent, or I should say, over fifty percent in the first twenty-four months. And the, again, the whole concept of that is to give the board. The opportunity to move forward with Measure R voter-approved projects in the near term. While still focusing on some of the longer-term prioritization needs.
Trustee Reckler, do you mind if, just because of the hour, we're supposed to be in a closed session about thirty minutes ago. If we go and see if other board members have questions, and if we can look back to.
Doctor Wal, you, what can you afford to do?
So, right now, we have zero dollars for Measure R. So, we do not have a dollar to allocate for an architect. So, the board, if they approve in, say, two weeks, a prioritization list, and let's say you approve. One of the schools that folks have mentioned they want done. You would then be, the second question would be, Mr. Freeze, do you have money? He'd say, no. He'd look to Dr. Wal. When are we gonna have money? And I'd say, we need to sell some Measure R bonds to get some money, and then we would have to start that process.
Why did you not assess last year?
Because we knew that, that we were in process of redoing the facilities master plan. COVID had just hit. There, there was so, we knew that a new board was gonna be elected in December. So, it wasn't prudent to take action on any prioritization until this process was done. So, we waited one year, knowing that we wouldn't be able to spend those dollars in the first six months. Because remember, you have to allocate five percent of your allocation in the first six months. And so, we didn't wanna be assessing and not spending anything for a full year. There, that seemed to be disingenuous to taxpayers, and I still look at my, one of my primary roles in this. Is to make sure that every recommendation I bring to the board has a lens of the taxpayers that authorize this measure. That we are trying to do what we said in the measure and trying to do so in the most cost-effective way possible.
Trustee Phillips, I think that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Christian, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Gonzalez, do you have any questions?
Thank you, I have any questions.
Mrs. Reckler, did you finish up?
I think so.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Doctor Wal, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is, yes, there's one hand up.
Okay.
Two hands.
Going once, going twice, gone.
All right, Lorraine Humes, you're gonna be first. You may unmute.
Thank you. I'm the taxpayer representative on the CBOC. Last year, our CBOC discovered there was an article in the Wall Street Journal. And it was talking, and we, our school district was named specifically in that, of the poor way the bonds were sold. There was. Piper Jeffries sold the bonds. Now, I don't know his, I saw KNN listed in that article. I don't know. If you chose Piper Jeffries or whatever, but what happened was Piper Jeffries sold the bonds. Within one day, he flipped the bonds and made thirty-five million dollars. The article said, that's not the way municipal bonds are sold, because what happens is the taxpayer ways winds up paying. Tremendous more on interest. And my question to the representative from KNN. How are you gonna make sure that doesn't happen again? And what was your involvement in, did you choose Piper Jeffries or what? That's all.
Okay, there's one more public comment, and then I do actually have a mini-response to that one. Maisha Harris Gash, you may unmute.
Good evening, again. It's been a long day, been a long evening. So, Doctor Wal, thank you for your report. It's a lot of information and a lot of needed information. Trustee Smith Folds, I always enjoy your questions. Trustee Smith Folds, I always enjoy your questions. They're layered, they're in depth, they're very thoughtful, and also learn a lot more with your questions and the answers. Something is kind of bothering my spirit because I kind of got blurred. And like, just kind of like something that I heard in the midst of your report, Doctor Wal. And I would just say, like, I don't believe in like really calling out people and surprising people. But just let's be mindful, not to say everybody, you know, we've done this year of race equity, social justice. And no one should be be offended, put off by feathers ruffled by a black woman asking. Direct, in-depth, layered, critical type of questions when. All of you have a responsibility to the students in our district, to their families and to the community. And so. I just hope that moving forward, we can be in this microaggression, or it's the hour of the day, maybe get some caffeine, I don't know. But just treat people the way that you want to be treated because we're all supposed to be in this for our students. And so that we're all heard. Let's be mindful of how we. Speak to each other. Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you to the people who called in. We had, the last board had a conversation. With Kenny about that article. So we'll just be repeating another board meeting that already happened. But that said. I am going to ask for a motion to approve this item. And then if there's any discussion. We will have a discussion. Do you have a motion to approve the item?
Make a motion to move this item, please, and Phillips.
Is there a second to move by? I will second to move the item. So we're on to discussion, trustee Reckler. If you have a discussion. We are focusing, trying to focus on that, on the, the what's at the house.
Yeah, usually I'm really clear in. What I feel or. The facts in front of me. This time I'm a little bit more uncertain. You know, it's important to me to see a plan. It's important to me that I understand what the master plan is. It's important to me that I, that I see. You know, some semblance of what's gonna be spent and when and how. And I'm just jumping with blind faith that this is gonna work. Which goes against my. Poor principle of the way I like to see data.
I think it goes against a lot of what we've done in the past and how we've operated, which goes to the. Retreat that we just came out of. So we do need to have some faith in staff. We just hired a brand new superintendent. So we do need to, in my opinion, humble opinion, have something. But people are free to vote how they choose. Mrs. Smith Folds, do you have any comments?
I just think that we're dealing with a lot of money that impacts students. And I agree that it may be necessary to have faith, but I also agree that it needs to be necessary to have. Clear information. We have to have clear information to make these very important decisions. So it's when you. For us to be able to say what we think, hope and believe, we need to be able to see it down on paper. There has to be an accountability level to it. We cannot hold. We cannot hold the superintendent accountable that turns around and holds you accountable if there's nothing written, nothing written down. Like, we have to be, we have to do better with that. Like, we have to be able to come. With a plan. I mean, but, and I don't like ultimatums. I don't like the fact that if we don't vote for this, then we're not gonna be able to do the schools that we have been talking about. Which specifically are Kennedy and Richmond. And that's an ultimatum. Like, if we don't do this and we can't do that. I understand that maybe be the process, but also understand that that. I understand that it just, it needs to be presented in such a way that we know that we are able to vote with accountability. And transparency to the community that elected us to this position. The presentations need to be more, they need to be clearer, they need to be in plainer language, and it needs to be attached to an outcome. When you do this, this is what's gonna happen. Not if you do this, then this is gonna happen. It's a very clear way of phrasing things. When we vote for this money, these bonds to be sold, then Kennedy will be built, or then an architect will be hired. And then this will happen. That if-then way of phrasing things makes it a lot clearer to everyone who is listening, in my opinion. To what we are doing with a vast amount of money that flows through this district. And people have to be able to see the money and see how it gets impacted at these, with these kids. They have to be able to see it. It has to be a one plus one equals two equation. And I just don't feel that that's coming out when we're saying, we have to trust, we have to have faith, we have to, we have to hope, we have to. No, we have to have one plus one equals two. Everybody in the community needs to be able to look at that and say, because you sold these bonds. You will have an architect and this is a timeline attached, and we will make sure this gets done because that's accountability and transparency. We are not doing it the correct way.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Christian.
Yes, thank you. I would just want to say, can we bring this back with clarity? We don't have to rush this. But let's, let's get some clarity to whatever we do, we want to make sure we do it right. And then we can proceed. So let's bring this back.
So let me just say this really quick. I don't know if the issue is that there is a lack of clarity. So if people have questions. Because there was an opportunity for people to ask questions. We need to step back. And let people ask some more questions because they're unclear about something. Then we can do that. So like, for example, Mr. Christian, do you have questions that you did not get answered?
What I'm saying is, is, do we have to rush this? Because like, whatever decision we make is, is a very important decision. So my thing is, do we have to rush it?
So I, I can answer that. What you're, what I'm asking you to approve tonight is for us to be prepared. To sell bonds. We're not going to sell a bond until after the board approves. The priority matrix. But if I wait for you to approve. The process to begin selling bonds, which is spending money because we're having people do work to get prepared. Then that slows down when we're gonna sell the bonds. And it, we lose some of the economies of scale, which will save taxpayers some money. The operational plan right now is that the prioritization matrix will go to the facilities committee on the sixteenth of June. Come back if all goes well to the board on the twenty-third of June. If the board approves that priority matrix, will be in place now for Louis's team to then begin the process of architects. And us to begin the process of financing. If the board does not approve the priority list on that night. I won't be going out and selling bonds. I'll be waiting because the board has not approved that plan. So they are contingent. So your approval. Is not putting the money in the bank yet. What you're doing is you're approving for me to do all the steps necessary. To be ready to go the minute you say go. So the answer is, it's a yes and no. We can delay it. It doesn't end the world. It just costs a little more to do the issuance. When we do that. So you can certainly table this item and say, we don't even want to give you approval. Until we have that prioritization. We understand that. This is. Really, this is us trying to do what the board has been asking us to do, which is be prepared. And have the steps in place so that we can execute. What the board's asking for. But I understand completely what we're hearing from comments. So.
Doctor Wal, thank you. Mr. Christian, did you have any more comments that you wanted to make?
And that's it.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, do you have any comments?
I do. Thank you, President Phillips. And thank you, Doctor Wal, for the presentation. I do think that, and I think this is for everybody on staff, we gotta remember that we do have a new board. And bonds and facilities are not my area of expertise whatsoever. I think that when, when. We have items like this coming to us, it would be really beneficial. And I think this on both sides, because I could have reached out as well to set up a meeting. But I think that if you want us to pass a big item like this, I think it'd be good if we sit down and you sit down with each one of us. To ensure that we understand everything that we're gonna be voting on and pushing through. Because I think that's where the discomfort comes from. Tonight has been a uncomfortable situation over and over again. At least for me, in my point of view. So I think that maybe communicating with board members a little bit more would be really helpful. Especially in areas like curriculum, I'll tell you, like, I don't need to meet with you, right? Like, I could probably understand that item pretty well, right? Because I was a teacher. But a bond, half the things that you said tonight were really all going over my head, right? So, so I probably should have that conversation prior to the board meeting where we're making a decision on voting on seventy-five million dollars, right? That's calming it down. But you know what I'm getting at. So maybe as a practice, that's something that we can start doing. I think that is also. We've had too many board meetings where we just don't have enough time in the day to find time to meet. But. Maybe that's something we can start doing. To me, from the sound a bit of tonight, if we don't push this forward. We potentially are gonna cost taxpayers money by waiting, which is why I'm going to vote for it. But know that tonight has been an uncomfortable night. And I don't think that we should have an uncomfortable night when it comes to money. Ever because of our previous experiences. So I'll just put that as a, as a, as a point. But I am thankful for the presentation and the work you're all doing. I think it's just, we have to do a little more communication between staff and, and board, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And the comments that you just made really are, you know, what we've been talking about in the retreats, you know, that we've been doing recently. So we're gonna, you know, as an organization, and as a governance team, you know, we all are gonna do some things, you know, a little differently. So people are not uncomfortable and that they have the information that they need, you know, going into board meetings. I am gonna vote for this as well. And it's really two things going on. Mr. Gonzalez, you talked about one, which is. Potential increases in cost from the delay. But the other one is. We. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna rebuild Kennedy. And I wanna be rebuilt rich for high school. And you can't do that off of hopes and dreams. Right? You can't do this off, like my pastor says, you can't go into the grocery store and say, hallelujah, thank you, Jesus. And they give you bread. They expect you to give them money, right? And so this is the process to start. Or put ourselves in the position to actually to get the financing to start those projects. And so. This is one of those instances where we have to be able to walk and chew bubble gum at the same time. And so we'll have the prioritization, draft prioritization list that comes, and then we will vote to make that whatever it is. And I think there's consensus on the board, just from listening to this meeting, at least on two of the facilities, right? So I don't even think that's necessarily gonna be an issue, or it shouldn't be, because I think everybody is being very honest about how they feel, right? And it seems like almost everybody, or everybody. So, but if you. If you want to build, rebuild those schools, this is part of that process. You can't, and it, and it actually is a contingency. You know, if you do this, then you can do this. If you don't do this, you can't do this. So. And again, when I say we need to have faith, I'm not saying blind faith, right? Because all of this stuff comes back. We're not authorizing them to spend seventy-five billion dollars. We're not authorizing them to spend anything, right? And with what staff is saying right now, not only are they not spending anything, they're not even going out to issue anything. Until we've actually approved the list. So there's no. There's actually no risk involved in the vote that we're doing tonight. Because they're not issuing it until we approve the prioritization list. And we're not authorizing them to spend any money. So there's literally no risk in this vote. It's just setting up the process for us to be able to do what we all have been saying. Over and over that we want, which is to rebuild schools and, and two schools in particular. So I, I will be voting for this because I can't. We do have to hold staff accountable, but we also have to hold ourselves accountable. So we tell the community that we want to be, rebuild Richmond. We tell the community we want to rebuild Stige, we want to rebuild Kennedy. And then we don't approve the financing, or to start the financing to be able to do that, then it's like we're just talking. This is the walk that goes with the talk. So I'm gonna vote for it. And trustee Reckler, can you, can you start the vote?
Well, I want to make one final comment first, and that is, is that I would appreciate that complex items like this are not dumped in consent in the future. So I'd really appreciate that. And I'd also wish that there had been an attachment instead of a, just a multi-page resolution. And I'm gonna vote no tonight. And the reason is because I just don't a hundred percent. Understand exactly what I'm doing right now. And if you want to bring it back on the twenty-third. And I understand it better, and I'm happy to vote yes, but tonight I'm voting no, so Reckler, no.
I don't want the checkbook in the same hands that it's been in. So if we're gonna do this, if you get my vote, the accountability is there. Money has been squandered. And not used the way it's supposed to be used, and, and things have not been done correctly. So the checkbook cannot stay in the same hands. We have got to have some clear transparency on what's happening. So if this bond. If the selling of the bonds happens, and the reason for it to happen is so we can then build these specific schools. That we are talking about, that we have all walked around now saying that this is going to be on the priority, top priority, high priority on our list. Then that's what needs to happen. Because we've all, Mr. Phillips, you, you just said that we've all said it. We've all said that these, we, not gonna be a problem. Kennedy and Richmond are gonna get built. And this is gonna happen because. You're hearing the, you're reading the room of the board, and the board is saying that these are top priorities, no matter what. The prioritization looks, list looks like, these are gonna be at the top. And this bond money that we have, that is gonna be in the bank, is gonna be used. The check is gonna be written to go straight for these schools.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Yeah, my, my answer is, I will vote for this with the understanding that, of what I just said. The understanding of, from me, what you're telling me is that it's going to be used for this reason. So, Smith Folds, yes.
I don't even know how to do this. Trustee Smith Folds, I just wanted, you voted yes, and I, I appreciate the vote. I don't want to get you to vote another way, but I just want, you said something, and I wanted to clarify something. So that we were on the same page and not working off of differing information. So. And what I wanted to clarify is, so they have the criteria and the weighting. And so they're gonna apply the criteria and the weighting to the schools. At this point, I have no. And so they're going to apply the criteria and the weighting to the schools. At this point, I have no way of knowing what. Order the schools are going to be in, but what I was saying earlier is that. When they bring that draft to us, whatever order it is in, we can change that order. And so. If, for example, those two schools are not at the top, we can actually push, push them to the top, regardless of where they fell in, in the order. But when they apply the matrix, I mean, the criteria and weighting, they're going to do that, and it's just going to be what it is, right? I think it'll help those schools because of the, the, the way, the way the, the criteria are, but I, I just want to let you know that, like, when they do apply it. They're not going to. Apply it and then move something, they're, 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 they're just going to give it back to us the way it came out, but that we have the ability to change it. And if it's not what we want, we will change.
Yes, I fully understand what you're saying. It's just that middle part about them bringing it back, I'm going to the end part. The end part is, these schools need to be at the top of the list. I will look at what they bring back, but the end result from what I'm hearing here. Is that those two schools need to be at the top of the list, and the authorization of this. Millions of dollars is to ensure that those two schools are not only at the top of the list, but they are prioritized to be done as rapidly as possible.
We're on the same page. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't want us to leave and had been crossed wires, so, uh, Mister, um, Christian.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, only thing I just wanted to add to it, that we need to make sure we do the best practices of. Whatever we do and that we do it right, not short change and all that. So my, my vote is yes, but we got to make sure. We're transparent to the people, accountable, and that everybody understanding what's going on. So, uh, uh, so, and like. Like it was said earlier, you know, you know, it, it'd be nice if you had somebody to, you know, you know. Debrief you on s- some of this, you know, before we get to the board meeting. So. But I vote yes.
Gonzalez, so yes.
Thank you very much, uh, motion. Carries, um, and then we have, we have to extend our meeting. Um. Doctor Hurst. How long do you think we need in close session? Twenty-five minutes. Board, can we do the next item in thirty minutes?
President Phillips, I apologize, I couldn't hear Doctor Hurst.
I'm sorry, twenty-five minutes.
Thank you.
So board, can we extend to eleven-thirty? And that's the close session time, and then the next item. So hopefully, because we have one more item. So hopefully, we don't use thirty minutes for the next item, but can we please extend to?
I'll move that.
Thank you. Another second.
Hold on a second.
Thank you. All right, so it's been moved, that's seconded, uh, by Reckler and Gonzalez, boy, uh, Reckler.
Smithfold, yes.
Christie, yes.
Gonzalez, so yes.
Thank you, uh, everybody. Okay, so the last item on the agenda. Um, our action item on the agenda is resolution number eighty, twenty-twenty-one.
So this is normally just an annual thing we do. By law, we have to do a resolution to do assessment. So we have measure D, measure E, we're already assessing those. That's basically on autopilot, we do an annual bond overview that Blake has done with me for several years. The only difference this time is that we are adding measure R to the assessment role. We already talked about that in the first item. And our recommendation is to assess measure R at the voter-approved sixty. Doing it any less than that goes into the same consequences that we just talked about. If you don't assess, now you can't issue and pay off the first amount, you can't access as much. So our recommendation is to assess exactly what the voters approve, which is our practice that we've done in previous bonds. A couple, we didn't do full assessments, and we weren't able to access the money as quickly, and that slowed down projects. So this is normally a consent item, just to roll it over and just do the assessment, because measure R is coming in. That's the only major difference. I can show you numbers again if you'd like to see them. Otherwise, that is the essence of this item.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, Trusty Reckler, you have any clarified questions?
I do. So my questions are, why only the new? And why not the big picture aggregate with all of the issuances? And, and what the total is?
So.
What's the entire obligation?
Here it comes right now, so that you can see that. There is each of the tax rates that will happen in each of the years. So if you go across. You can see the total combined tax rate will be for twenty-one, twenty-two, three oh nine, sixty-three. Across all measures, the voter authorization across all measures is three fifty-eight. So we're still below, we're in some measures like measure E, we're down to just eight dollars. As you can see, measure E will be paid off in five years and off the books. Measure M, you can see it slowly tapering down, and it will disappear. Measure D. Went a little bit above. Now, some of the. Measure pieces are in the refinancing, but it doesn't change those pieces there, because those are more over here. Measure J is the one where we had to do some capital appreciation bonds. That's the one that we never fully issued. We still have. Seventy million in authorization that we won't be able to access until about here, twenty thirty-six. Measure D is very new, so you can see it's got a thirty-year amortization, um, tapering down. So you can see that we're sitting at three oh nine, we then drop a little bit. Even with the sixty-dollar assessment, the three oh one, two ninety-two, and you can see it tapers down, a big change. In twenty thirty-four, thirty-five, when measure D drops off. Part of, the, part of the two thousand two portion of measure D drops off, you start to see one of the bigger drops there. So the, what the board is approving is a three hundred nine dollar assessment. This year. That's what is the aggregate, and that is lower than the, um, author, taxpayer authorized three fifty-eight. By forty-eight dollars below. And this is part of the tax management that we've been doing for years to equalize with the county treasurer, so that there aren't wild swings. And taxpayers can project what it's going to be like.
Okay, so the entire one, what you say, the entire obligation was three oh nine?
Three oh nine, sixty-three.
Sixty-three. And what's the forecast for the future?
Wha- what's that?
Give me, what's the forecast for the future? Give me like, give me like the five.
It goes three oh nine, three oh one, two ninety-two. Two ninety, two eighty-six.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, trustee Phillips. Doctor Will, you want us to authorize for you to spend three hundred and nine dollars?
We're not spending anything. This is what the county assessor will assess on the property tax bill. Three hundred and nine dollars per hundred thousand of value. That'll be the assessment.
Three hundred and nine dollars will be put on. Taxpayers.
Per each hundred thousand in assessed value. So if your house is worth three hundred thousand assessed value, your property tax bill would be nine hundred seventeen dollars.
Right.
In that scenario, and you can do the math depending. Now, one of the slides I didn't show, but this might be actually helpful. Here is the average assessed value of our district. The majority of our district's assessed value is right here at the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar. Even though the median sale price of a house in the, in the county is. Eight forty, and that's actually jumped up to nine seventy in the last three months. The median house price in Richmond is at five ninety-three if it's a resale, but our assessed value. Is right down here between three seventeen and three sixty-five. So you're talking a thousand dollars in property tax. Which has been pretty consistent. We've been within eight ninety, nine hundred to a thousand for quite a while. But this is our actual assessed values across the district. You see quite a few are still way down here, like. Many of the houses in Kensington are still sitting in this range, as funny as it sounds. They're in the real low because they've been owned for thirty years prior to Prop thirteen.
What happens if you don't, if the, the majority of the board doesn't approve this?
So Blake, you want to explain what happens if the board does not approve the annual resolution?
Yeah, sure. Um, and, and again, you know, great questions, uh, trustee Smithfold. Um, uh, this would, i- i- if the board were not to approve the annual, uh, resolution. Requesting the county to initiate a tax, uh, the, the main implications would be towards measure R. Um, uh, as there is no outstanding debt associated with measure R. There would actually be, uh, for the second year in a row, no assessment levied on, uh. Homeowners within the district, uh, having approved, um. The measure in March of two thousand twenty, it would be the second year in a row that the assessment would be. Um, forgone, uh, meaning that, uh, the ultimate repayment of measure R bonds. Uh, would likely extend for a later duration, so it would be a multi-generational thing impact. Where, you know, each issuance is roughly thirty years. Uh, each year, we don't. Initiate the measure R financing, both in terms of assessments and in terms of bond repayment. Uh, those, those years don't disappear. They, they end up stacking on the back end of the program. And, um, and financing in the latter years. Is significantly more costly than in the early years, both in terms of interest rate. Um, and, uh, accumulated interest costs, and so, um. I would, I would say that the impact would be a, uh, an overall cost, uh, to. Taxpayers by foregoing this early year assessment.
So does this impact the vote that we just made about being able to. Deal with the bond? So if we don't, so let me just make sure I understand this. So we just did a vote, right? But that vote becomes null and void if we don't vote this one. That's what you're saying.
We're not going to go, we're not going to go down that road again. Um, so we're, uh, uh, in terms of, um. You voting on something and then, you know, it potentially not being able to happen, you would still be able to issue. The first series of measure R bonds, even if the board collectively decided not to approve this resolution. The structure of that, of, of that initial sale would look different. Than the slide that Doctor Wold showed earlier in our discussion about the repayment. We would no longer be paying off approximately nineteen point six million dollars of the seventy-five borrowed. In the, in the next fiscal year. Uh, the reason being is because we'd have no assessment to pay that off.
So it would have to be kicked down the, kicked down the field again, is what you're saying.
And then, that, that, that's correct. There wouldn't, there would be no principal payment. There would be interest, because every time. There is debt sold, there's interest due. Um, and so the way that we would structure it is there would be. Um, proceeds of the issuance would actually be deposited in an account to pay the initial interest payment. Until the assessment was available to actually pay it all itself.
Which would limit monies that would be available for construction, because it'd be have to be held for debt service. The other thing is. See this estimated tax rate here, fifty-seven, twenty? You can only borrow what you can pay back under the sixty-dollar limitation. So if you are paying back fifty-seven dollars worth, you have no access to any additional cash. So by not assessing, that fifty-seven is going to move down a couple of years, which is going to. Change when we can do the next issuance of funds. And this is extremely complex stuff, so one thing heard loud and clear. Having one-on-one meetings before we do any more of this will absolutely happen. So that there's more time to go through. But again, this assessment does just change the timeframe from when we do things. And it pushes things to later. I hope that clarifies.
President Phillips, that's all the questions. Yes, that, that clarified.
Thank you. Mister Christian, you have any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Mister Gonzalez, so you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Um, I just want to ask a couple of questions really quickly. Um, so. The way we get the money is through this, right? Okay, so.
Correct. It's, the money is then deposited in fund twenty-one. Where it's available for Lewis's team to then bring to the board. For authorization to spend the money in fund twenty-one. So again, there's multiple steps where the board. Makes the decision on what and how those dollars are spent.
Hold on, Doctor Wolf, we don't have a lot of time. So we assess. The county basically collects the tax, right? And then we get the money, right?
It, it sits in our bond, it sits in our bond interest fund that the county controls.
Right, but.
Yes.
I'm not saying we get the money like it's in my pocket. I don't mean it like that, but that's how we. Life would be a lot easier if I did, but that's not what I'm saying. Uh, so, and that's how we get the money, right?
So we, we get the bond sales, which goes to our funds, and then the county assesses. And that stays in the bond redemption fund, which is a different fund that then pays debt service.
That pays it back, right, right. So, but, but if we don't do this, it would be the equivalent of borrowing money. And then using the money that we borrowed to pay the people back, um, almost like if you had a credit card, because I like analogies. So like, you got a credit card, right? So that's, that's the bond. And then when your credit card payment came due. You took out a cash advance on the same credit card to make your credit card payment.
A painful example, yes.
Okay, so I like using examples so people can understand what we're talking about. So. We will be paying back debt with debt unless we do this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um. And if we pay back the debt, so I'm just going to use small numbers, right? So, um, let's say we had ten dollars of debt. Right? And we were able to get, and we didn't do this, right? And we had to pay back three dollars a year. I'm just making these, these numbers up. We had to pay back three dollars a year. If we pay back the debt with the vet, if we pay back, if we pay back the debt with the debt, meaning we pay back. The three dollars, the, the payment that we have to make out of the ten, that only leaves us seven to be able to work with, right?
Until, until we start assessing, that is correct.
Right. And if we don't assess again the next year, then we pay back the next three dollars out of this. Now we, now we, now we only have four, right?
We would have a problem, yes.
Okay, so the only way to be able to use the money to use the credit. Is to have a, 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 a source to come back to make the payments without having to use the money we borrowed to make the payments, right?
Yep, and, and that's why we take these to the voters.
Doctor Wolf, hold on. And so the source to make the payments without having to use the debt to make the payments is this assessment, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. No more question. Um, do we have any, uh, public comment on this item?
Uh, let me see. I don't see any hints.
So, but just to be very clear, we, if we do not do this. Even though we borrow the money, issue the bonds later, we cannot use all of the bonds for our projects. Because we have to use the proceed from the bonds to make debt service payments, i.e. credit card. i.e. credit card payments, right?
Yep, interest payments.
Okay, any, uh, any, uh, public comment?
No hands.
Okay, so we're on to board discussion. Can I have a motion to approve this item, Board? Okay, it's been moved by Reckler. Can I have a second? Seconded by Phillips. Um, any more discussion? Okay, Reckler, vote please.
Reckler, yes.
Um, sorry, uh, trustee Phillips, it's just the analogy about the credit card just reminded me of, my mom said that her dad, my granddad, used to say, if you don't have cash, you can't afford to buy it. So I'm abstaining.
I'm just gonna say this, there's something so big in this world that you have to finance. And rebuilding twenty schools is one of those things. So nobody has enough cash to do a deal like this. Uh, but I'll just, I'm just gonna leave it at that. I hear you. Um, the next person is Christian.
Christian, yes. Salas, oh, yes?
Phillips, yes. Um, the item carries. Um, we are now done with everything on the agenda. Um, so we're gonna go to item E-one, which is disclosure of items to be, to be discussed in closed session. And we have one item, is conference with labor negotiators. Um, do we have any public comment on this one item?
Looking for hands, seeing none, no hands.
Okay, um, public, we are going to adjourn to closed session. And then we'll be back out of closed session, uh, to, uh, report out and to finish up the final things in the meeting. Uh, but we're gonna adjourn to closed session. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome back trustees and Dr. Hurst. We are live. There are nine folks in the audience.
Thank you for waiting for us, Mr. Jordan.
No worries, no worries at all.
And I see President Phillips in the audience. Maybe he went through the wrong link. He's raising his hand.
Think, I don't see, I don't see trustee Smith. It looks like we're missing trustee Smith Folds and I don't know if Dr. Wald was coming back. I don't see those two. There's Wald.
While we wait, can I just say that Ms. Hardy today from her class brought me a bag of lettuce that her class, her specialty class, farmed themselves. It was such a nice gift. Ms. Hardy, I just want to let you know that I had it for lunch. It was definitely earthy, but it was great. So thank you for that. I just want to share because it was a really cute moment.
And here's trustee Smith Folds.
I'm on mute. I was like, I'm so stressed out. I couldn't get back here, but I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I'm here.
Okay, we are reconvening open session. Dr. Wald, do we have anything to report out of close?
No, we have nothing to report out of close.
It's too many doctors. I meant to say Dr. Hurst. I'm sorry. Dr. Hurst, do we have any? I'm sorry. Dr. Hurst, do we have anything to report out of close?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Board, theoretically, the meeting was supposed to be over in seven minutes ago at 11:30. So I am just going to say very briefly that our next meeting is on June 9th. And adjourned because we are over our time. Bye-bye, everybody. Thank you so much, board, for your work. Thank you, staff, for your work.